I will share my stash with you.
I'm sad, Mike Olbrecht is not here tonight. But we'll see Mike at the graduation, Mike Olbrecht. Was he your principal when you were there?
No, no, he, uh, no. But he, he, uh, he, he replaced him.
Okay.
Yeah, it, we went through a spring of the might. The, the one, Terry caught me off guard. Terry Cheshire worked under Bob Davidson. And then Cheshire became principal, but he didn't stay for a long time. And he kept moving on and became principal of Cascade High School.
Mm-hmm. Come on, people, let's go.
I, I was always curious, Mike, if you wouldn't get me moving to Cascade. It's better paying.
Yeah.
I'll give him that.
Yeah. Yeah. I saw him today at the senior assembly, but I didn't stop. I figured I'd see him either tonight or at graduation, so. Cause you know, he's been the principal the whole time. My kids were both there, so.
Oh, here we go. I'd like to call this special meeting to order. Uh, welcome. This is a special meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act. At this time, we will be going into an executive session for approximately thirty minutes. The purpose of this executive session is to evaluate the qualifications of applicants for public employment and to discuss with legal counsel the legal or financial risk of a course of action. We will return at seven PM for our regular meeting.
It's just the weirdest thing. It's like there's food in it.
So someone told me, Ms. Chafewell, you have to eat like breadcrumbs.
No, I mean, yeah.
Like, yeah, you have to go back and back and back and back because they're usually just the main thing. But it's so confusing because you don't know, you can't get to the main until you go back. It's like there's no button to go back to the bridge. That's what's annoying. So whatever document you are in.
Yes, okay, please.
It's Hansel and Gretel.
I have a real problem with it. I do.
Um, if you ask.
Well, because it's terrible.
Don't turn the, like, civic agenda stuff to 8.01. Choices of motions or anything like that.
No, it's not. It will be. Same. You get to it first?
Good evening.
Just talk over them.
Good evening. Sorry about that. Is that better? All right, it is seven o'clock and we're calling our regular, regular meeting to order. And I just some housekeeping information. Director Farah is on Zoom. And our chief accountability officer, Dr. Jewel Harmon, is on or shortly will be on the screen. All righty, and Ms. Joyce Wilson, our executive director of human resources, should be on the screen. So that's just some housekeeping items. And as we've started doing, we're doing a roll call. So we're, we're on to 1.03. And I'm going to start the roll call. And we're going to start off with Vice President Enaul.
Uh, President.
And Director Farah.
Present.
Uh, Director Beddinger.
Present.
Uh, Director Clark.
Present.
All right, and I'm obviously here. So we, I'd like to ask now Director Beddinger to lead us in the flag salute. If you'll all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's really good to see all of you here tonight in person. Um, I want to welcome each and every one of you. Uh, and of course, this is, this is our meeting that was, is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act. And we welcome the public's participation in this board and thank those of you who come to this meeting and those who are viewing our live stream. And I'm going to go through some, just some housekeeping items again so we're all on the same page. The purpose of the board meeting is for the board to conduct its business in public. During the meeting, the board will listen to but not respond to comments from visitors. Those wishing to comment must complete a comment card and turn it in to Carolyn Curry, our executive secretary, before the meeting begins or no later than the beginning of the legislative updates. No later. We're going to call it off after that. No cards will be accepted once this report has begun. Visitors who have completed a comment card indicating, and listen to this carefully, indicating a desire to speak to an agenda item will be called at that portion, portion of the agenda. So make sure you note that on your comment card. If you wish to speak to any agenda item, make sure it's there. Uh, there is a brief delay in the live stream audio. We will allow for extra time for you to make your way to the boardroom if you happen to be in the overflow room. And we do have an overflow tonight, so we're going to be very respectful of that. When it is your turn to address the board, please state your name at the start of your testimony. Public comments will be heard after the opening, during preliminary communication from the audience at specific agenda items, and during final communication from the audience. Students will be the first to speak on any topic. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. You will hear a timer when three minutes are up. And we have quite a bit of public testimony tonight, so I'm knowing all, all here are going to observe our rules and we're going to make sure every voice is heard and gets equal time. So please do not be specific in your names of staff or students or personal identifiable information. And abusive public comments personally directed towards staff or board members will not be tolerated. And I know you're not going to do that tonight. Uh, the president may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when it is too lengthy, obscene, or irrelevant. Per board procedure, written material to provide board members with background information should be submitted to the superintendent office at least one week in advance of the meeting. All right, I'm going to call on Director Clark to read our land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge we are gathered upon the ancestral lands of the Mukilshudinian tribe who historically lived throughout the area between the Cascade Mountains and Puget Sound.
Thank you, Director Clark. Um, I'd like to now ask interim Superintendent Vella if there are any changes to the agenda.
President Hamada, supplemental personnel report has been added to the consent agenda as item 10.04.
All right, I now will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda with the addition of item 1004.
I second.
Uh, discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of adding, uh, the agenda as written with the addition of the 10.04, uh, the supplemental, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. Any abstentions, the motion carries. All right. We are now on to 2.0, recognition. Oh, excuse me, wait a minute here. Yeah. 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 Um, of our national board certified teachers. And I'm going to call on interim Superintendent Vella for introductions. Mr. Vella.
Thank you, President Hamada. I'd like to call in Ms. Kathy Lindowski, our director of teacher and leadership development, to lead us through this recognition.
President Hamada, members of the board, Superintendent Vella, Ms. Curry. Good evening. It's nice to be here in person. The last two years have brought many challenges to our national board, to the national board certification process. The course brought, the course became virtual. Instruction became synchronous, asynchronous, and/or hybrid. And professional and personal demands were different than ever before. In past years, many teacher, teachers began the process of becoming a national board certified teacher. But only some of them earned the honor. In 2021, only three Kent School District teachers became nationally board certified teachers. Over the course of three years, candidates typically invest 200 to 400 hours in portfolio activities. The Kent School District partners The Kent School District partners with the Kent Education Association to provide support for teachers choosing to pursue national board certification process. The process involves a demonstration of the candidate's teaching practice as measured through a two-part assessment. A portfolio of videotaped classroom teaching, lessons planned, and student work samples to show the teacher's impact on student learning, and the demonstration of subject area knowledge, classroom practices, curriculum design, and student learning through a written assessment. So you can see how the pandemic would provide additional challenges to this work. Before we recognize our 2021 National Board recipients, I'd like to recognize our Kent School District National Board facilitators. All three of our facilitators are themselves Kent School District National Board certified teachers. These three Kent School District teachers invest in planning, recruiting, advertising, and facilitating multiple sessions for our cohorts throughout the year. If your, two of our, two of our facilitators are here, and I'd like them to give a wave because they're way back in the corner when I call your name. Stacy Greenwich, new teacher mentor program specialist with the Kent School District. Stacy became a national board certified teacher in 2011. Laura Marus is also a new teacher mentor program specialist with the Kent School District, and she became a national board certified teacher in 2014. Unable to join us, but a valuable part of our facilitator team is Ryan Chin. Ryan is a science teacher at Kentwood High School and became a national board certified teacher in 2008. On behalf of all of our teachers in this three-year process, our three recipients tonight, the program and professional development team, and the Kent School District, thank you for all you do for our teachers and this program. Thank you. And now, tonight, we are proud to honor our newest cohort, our 2021 National Board Certified Teachers. Our first two honorees were unable to join us tonight, but I would still like to give them the recognition they deserve. First of all, Ha Nguyen, who is the Pine Tree Elementary Math Coach, earned her national board certification as a generalist in middle school. There are categories for your certification, that was hers. Generalist, middle school. So congratulations to Ha. Kelsey Wagner is a second grade teacher at Neely O'Brien Elementary, and her national board content area is literacy, reading, language arts, early and middle childhood. Congratulations, Kelsey. Now our, our national board certified teacher who's with us of the audience, we will recognize her, and I'll ask you to come forward and receive your certificate from Superintendent Vella. And I also want to take a moment to acknowledge your family who's with you tonight because this is not a process someone can do without a whole lot of family sacrifice and support. So thank you for supporting Joanna. So round of applause for the family. So Joanna Guest. Joanna, oh, I should have asked you that, is a middle, she's an EA in math. She, math teacher? At Cedar Heights Middle School. Her national board content area is mathematics and early adolescent. So congratulations, Joanna. And also thank you to her principal, Erica Hansen, for all her support. Okay, congratulations to our 2021 National Board Certified Teachers.
Can I have a point of privilege?
Sure.
Um, I went through the national board process myself. I was certified in 2010 and renewed in 2020 in my certification in health education. I just know that the, all the time work and energy to doing your national boards is very challenging but very rewarding. I always tell people it's the best professional development I ever had because it was about me and my classroom and my students. And so I appreciate the hard work that you've done, if we've gone into that. And so thank you for all your hard work and everything you did for your students.
And I would be remiss to not take a point of privilege myself. I'm the mother of a daughter who has been nationally certified not once but twice. And I know in her particular district, she had to pay initial out-of-pocket costs and she did her first run while she was teaching full-time. And I know, because I walked through her presentation, saw it, and it, the work is amazing. And it's a lot of, it's like a college class crammed into tons and tons of work. So again, our teachers are the ones that are in our front ranks, and we really applaud everything all of you do, but especially when you go through a program like this to accelerate your training. So again, all of us from the board really appreciate everything you do. All right. We're on to, um, let's see, we're on to, we've just completed that, we're on to preliminary communication from the audience. And the way we're going to do this is going to be in-person public comments will be made up to 30 minutes. And the order we're going to do this is first in-person students. Do we have any in-person students?
No, there are no student in-person comments tonight.
All right, and the second order of business is going to be, again, highlighting our actual students, our customers, our online student general comments. And I think we have some of those, right, Ms. Curry?
We do, so I will set the timer for 30 minutes to begin reading those.
Thank you so much.
Our first student comment tonight is from Ellie Archibald. I went to talk about the benefits of having longer recess. Currently, I get three 10-minute recess breaks. By the time we get released from the classroom, walk to where I want to play, it's already time to get back up to go inside. It is very hard to focus in class when we do not get long enough breaks. My body has a hard time sitting still because I could not get all of my energy out. This makes it hard for me to focus on my lessons and learn. I feel the teachers would also like to have a longer recess so that they can better prepare fun activities. I know that this year, many teachers are not getting their prep time because they have to come into my class or my friends' classes when our teacher is absent. It is hard to learn when we have 10 different teachers in one day. I feel bad that this is stressful for my teachers, which makes it stressful for me. A longer recess would help make everyone happier. Thank you for helping make schools better for everyone. Next student, Derek Joseph. I'm hoping to talk about two concerns that I have at school. The first is the bathroom situation at the schools. The boys' bathroom is very open, and when multiple boys are using the urinals at the same time, there is a big level of discomfort. Boys make comments that they can see each other's privates, and I think that this could be resolved by installing dividers between the urinals. The second topic I wanted to discuss is about sixth graders going to the middle school. I don't think that all students are ready by sixth grade to change how they do school. I heard they don't get recess in middle school. Recession is an important part of the day because it gives our bodies and brains a break. In fifth grade, we get to pick an instrument to play in band or orchestra. If we go to middle school in sixth grade, we will only get one year with that teacher, which makes learning a new skill more difficult. It would be better if we could have the same teacher for two years. I also wanted to say thank you for making school in person this year, even when COVID cases were increasing. Online learning was really hard, and it is another reason why I think sixth graders should stay in elementary schools, since we already missed a year. I think my school is really fun, and I love learning in person. Thank you for making in-person learning happen for us. Next up is Dallin Williams. I have an idea that I think will make school even better. I love my school, and I think it is awesome, but I wish we had 16-minute recesses. Right now, we can only get 10 minutes at recess, and this does not give us enough time to do more than one short game at recess. I would like to be able to play longer so I can play with more people, so they feel included, and everybody is really fun. I would like school to start a little later so kids can have more time to talk and play before school starts. I would love it if our schools could have better playgrounds. There is not a lot of playground equipment, so it is hard to get a turn on the big toy since recess is so short. I have a small class this year, and that is awesome. I want to keep small classes and think all my friends learn better when we have less students in class. I don't think that my student likes that our class is mostly boys, but I am okay with it. So maybe if classes could have equal boys and girls would make teachers happier. I like it when my teacher is happy, she is more fun. I would like it if teachers could have recess to play with the kids. I don't think that they get to play when we are at recess, and that makes me sad. Playing is important for everyone, even teachers, and my teacher is really fun, so I want to be able to play at recess with her. Next up is Esther Alsop. I want to tell you about something good at school. At the beginning of the year, I was not a very good reader. I did not like coming to school because it was hard, and my friends could read better than me. My teacher last year tried to help me on the computer to be a better reader, but it was hard for me to learn on the computer. This year, my teacher put me in a special group where we got help with reading. This group was not with my teacher, but with another teacher. She made reading fun, and now I can read much better. My favorite books are about animals. My mom said not all schools have the same reading groups as our schools to help other kids who have a hard time reading like me, and I think that if all of the schools, I think that all of the schools should. It really helps. My teacher gives me books to keep at home to practice reading. Reading is more fun when it is a book you get to keep. I would not want to change with very many things about my school and teachers, but I do wish that school started later in the day. My body does not want to wake up in the mornings, and I wish every day I could sleep two more hours. Can you make school later so we can get more sleep? I think that would help a lot of people, since my friends say they don't like to wake up early either. Our brains need time to wake up so we can learn our best. Next up is Noah Rose. I'm in fourth grade at Sawyer Woods, and I really like that we got to have a school carnival again. I'm glad we don't have to go back to remote school because I like being with my friends and meeting my teachers. I really want to go on a field trip on a bus somewhere because I've never been on a field trip, and my little brother gets to go to the tide pools next week, which teaches you a lot about the ocean. Field trips help you remember better than learning about it in a book because you can hold and see things. My class never got to go in second grade because we did remote school, so we missed out on this important trip. Lastly, my cousins and my mom and my dad and my little brother went on field trips, so I think my class should be able to go on one also. Next up, Sakura Burke Young. Hi, board. I had a lot of fun experiencing KMTA this year. The teachers made it extremely enjoyable, and I will miss them dearly. Next, Abraham Diane. I will be talking about Eid and how we fasted for 30 days throughout the month and was a crazy experience and a very spiritual month, and enjoyed it, and the meeting of Ramadan to feel what it feels like for people who don't have much or sometimes can't even eat at all. And also, after this month, to celebrate, we have a party and eat all together with family. Next is Nora Chandi. A positive experience I've had in the Kent School District is how much the cheerleaders do for the school and how much school spirit they have. The cheerleaders are always there at events, whether we are volunteering or there to bring more spirit. They put a lot of effort into the school, and I appreciate how much the Kent Meridian cheerleaders have contributed to our school. Varun Hakla. Hey, I am quite thankful for being able to partake in an event such as track, as I was able to have a lot of fun and learn quite a lot. Although I personally didn't do great this year, I am very proud of how our team performed as a whole and can't wait to be back next year. Ramla Mohammed. Judo is one of my favorite sports because I love their sportsmanship and I love how it's always fun. Next is by Drake Agnew. We need more lunch and recess time. I need to move more throughout the day, and there is not enough time during our 10-minute recess or 20-minute lunch. Can you please increase this? Next is by Grace Agnew. We need more lunch and recess time. I need to move more throughout the day, and there is not enough time during our 10-minute recess or 20-minute lunch. Can you please increase this? Next is by Matab Razai. Hi, this is Mazab Razai. I am the vice president of Kent Meridian Afghan Association. KMASA is here to support students who are new in USA, helping them with homework, financial aid, scholarships, leadership development, and much more. We have club meetings every other week. We are preparing agenda, which we have a section for our student, and it's very helpful is updates and giving them information and translating for them. We are celebrating Eid as it is a Muslim event after 30-day of Ramadan, which we invite staff and students after school and giving and preparing traditional food and cultural decoration. Now, Ra's is New Year in Persian calendar, where we invite staff and student to our event to enjoy with all traditional foods, and it's a perfect time for our students to show off their beautiful culture, such as clothing and dance, language. Ramadan is a month where Muslim students and staff and Muslim people, they will start fasting before the sunup to sundown, which we don't eat or drink, and we refrain smoking and any other substance. Women's Day, we found out that it's a great opportunity to thank our female teachers and families and the hard work they do for us daily, and we celebrate it with Happy Women's Day. And we also release a merch of KMASA logo. Thank you. Next is Daphne Jackson. I am a fourth grader at Sawyer Woods, and I personally think that the teachers, at least that I have had, are amazing and always do their best. I also think that the students are very nice and are very helpful to each other, but I think that there should be more buses because the bus that I go on is very crowded, and that there needs to be more room. Also, the math that they give us to me is kind of easy most of the time, but my teacher is doing her best in trying to give me a challenge. I have made really good friends there, and one especially good friend, and I am sad to leave her just because I am in the higher, more advanced grade level. I wish that I could still be able to see her every day at school next year and everyone else who is my friend. Resources, or I'm sorry, recesses are fun, but I wish that there weren't any zones that keep us separated from our friends in other classes. The building is also nice and is always kept in order, and I like how big it is. But overall, Sawyer Woods is amazing, from the teachers to the building. Next is Sadie Altona. I would like to say that I like my teachers and how helpful and kind they are to me. My school is fun, and I love it. The teachers are super kind. They make me feel safe, even though I'm only in second grade. It's the best school. The teachers give us wind bins, and those are a lot of fun. I would like to change having zones at recess at our school. I would like to play with my friends in different classes and be with them at recess. I hope next year we don't have zones at recess. Next up is Ava Porter. I've been a student of the Kent School District since I was in kindergarten. I would like to say that I support the decision that Kent School District made a few years ago to make Wednesday's half-days of school. Giving students a day of less school every week gives them a day to dedicate to their own personal interests and refresh a little bit from the rest of the week. Every Wednesday, students can get more exercise, spend more time with families, and plan fun activities that they wouldn't have time for on a normal school day. It is important that students have a day that they can have more for themselves. I think that we could get all of the necessary curriculum done in school if every day was a half-day. Next up is Solly Altana. I love how the teachers at Sawyer Wood are kind, caring, and loving to all of the students. I love how they help all of us when we are having a hard time or confused. I just love all of the teachers at Sawyer Woods, and I just love that I could be on the track team, and I love how that sometimes there are fun art projects and sometimes we have to chew gum in class, and it just makes me really happy. And his teachers are what make me want to go to school. Although the changes I would like to see for next year is I don't really want any more zones, and I would like to be able to play with all of my friends, even when they're in different classes, and just play with them at recess and have a fun time. I also would like to play with other students in the same grade as me. I miss being with my friends that are in the same grade as me but at a different lunch in different recess zones. Next up is Mary Ann Porter. I'm so glad that we don't have to wear masks anymore. Please don't make us wear them again. I also want my big sister to stop writing so much. She does not like school because almost all of the time in school, she just writes, writes, writes. writes, writes. She doesn't do any science or even an elective. She's in 6th grade. Faith Brown. Kids should have more time for recess, because it gives them more time to get their energy out, so they're not as crazy in class. Also, I think kids should have a longer lunch, because they might not get enough food in their stomachs to focus in class. Finally, I think 6th grade should stay at Sawyer Woods. Isaac Brown. Thank you for having in-person learning. I love Sawyer Woods. Also, I love the teachers here and would like to stay for grade 6. Finally, please make recess and lunch longer. Oliver Wilk. I would like to have more recess time to get wiggles out. It will help me with doing school and not getting out of my seat. Can you please make sure there is time to, I'm sorry, that there is a toy to play with in each zone? A zone is a place that you have to stay in for recess. Zone 4 only has the field, and we are stuck in that zone all recesses for a full week. It is harder to get my wiggles out when it is only a field. Thank you. My teacher is really awesome. He is nice and gives us challenges. Lola Wilk. The highly capable program is really fun, but I would like if you tested everyone in 2 through 5 grade, because my class doesn't have a lot of girls in it. So when we do girls versus boys, the boys have an unfair advantage. Kaylin Giles. I'm thankful that this year I got to meet a fun bunch of people, as well as great teachers. They all wanted to help me learn and make sure I got the best out of my education while also making each day in the classroom an adventure with different activities throughout the year. I think that one thing that could be improved in my school is to have a bigger variety of electives for students. Right now, there are only a couple, and it's frustrating when you can't take the same class twice, as well as some electives only being open to 7th graders and some only being open to 8th graders. I have enjoyed navigating the pleasure that is middle school this year, and I hope to see more awesome things happen next year as well. Zachary Giles. I really enjoyed 5th grade. It was fun to go to Biz Town and to learn about new types of math. Also, I really enjoyed my teachers this year. They were kind and taught me a lot. I really loved learning how to play the violin, and it was super fun. Joshua Giles. I love how the school allows more diverse sports like golf be played, because it was a sport. I wanted to try and learn and didn't think I would have the chance. I also love my main elective auto shop. It brought me knowledge I could use in the real world whilst providing a place where I could talk and ask questions, being behind most people in the class. I would love to see more shop elective like wood shop or metal shop, which could provide kids with more opportunities. Rex Madden. There are too many good things to think of when it comes to my teacher. She knows that we all like Minecraft, so on Fridays, she lets us play as a reward for surviving the whole week. 4th grade is not easy, not at all. She has helped me get through it, so I am not scared or experience too much emotional pain. My teachers cheer us on. When we did Battle of the Books, we lost to the 6th grader by one question. For me, teachers shelters us from harm, encourage us when we are down, and be there when we need them. Alex Madden. I like my teacher, because she is really kind to everyone in class. She is also very helpful. I like to go to school to see the pet butterflies. What I want is more time for snacks and PE, so I can exercise and spend time with friends. Cody Mitchell. I wanted to personally thank you all for the amazing things you have done for us this year. I hope you all have a great summer. Kennedy Serene. Dear School Board, I just wanted to say thank you for all that you've done. Thank you, thanks to the decisions you have been making. School has felt normal since the pandemic started. I also appreciate you guys looking out for us and making sure all students are safe. Sincerely, a grateful student. Jersey Wilton. Thank you for thinking of the students and making decisions that are best for us. We appreciate all of your hard work. Sophia Pretz. I would like to thank everyone for being awesome. Thank you for making sure that everyone feels so safe all of the time. Keep being awesome. Kaylin Navarro. Thank you for your hard work in protecting and making decisions for the district, students, and teachers. Kira Reddy. Thank you so much for all that you do for our schools. I realize you get a lot of hateful negative comments from parents and teachers, but I just want you to know that you are loved, you are appreciated, you do so many things for our students to thrive, and I am very grateful. I hope you had, or, sorry, I hope you have a wonderful day, and thanks again. Leila Thinhouse. Thank you for all that you do for our school, and we all appreciate you. Abigail Beltran. Thank you for all the work you do to help us and our district. You work so hard to try and make students happy with your decisions. Some decisions you make may make us mad or upset in the moment, but when we take time and think about it, we realize you're doing what's best for us. Your hard work is appreciated around the school district. Thank you so much, and enjoy your summer. Ella Ball. I want to say thank you for the hard work that you have all done. I am very grateful for how you all, I'm sorry, for how you have changed and reviewed many of the students' requests and have answered them politely. Thank you for being open to requests and change and for listening to us students. Thank you. Addison Basom. I just want to say thank you for all you do, and thank you for making my school year great. Ashley Nowaki. Thank you so much for all your hard work. Thank you for making sure that we could all come back to in-person school this year. Also, I know the school year has not ended, but thank you in advance for helping us finish the year strong. Haley Futch. Thank you for making our community a safe learning space for everyone. I like this quote for the administrative team, because you really implied it this school year. Never let a stumble in the road be the end of the journey. Have a great rest of the day. Leila Moorford. I would like to say thank you. The decisions you've made have affected us greatly. We might not always realize they will help us at the moment, but we think about it and find it will help us. You have kept us safe this whole school year and for many more to come. Have a great rest of your day. Krista Lee Ruierez. I want to say thank you for helping the students and staff with things they needed help with. You helped change many people's lives with their decisions. Laney Culp. There have been so many negatives surrounding this school year as a whole, and I just wanted to thank you. Your work is greatly appreciated. Also, special regards to my principal for his contribution at my elementary school, and have fun over retirement. Trinity Matthews. Thank you for caring and help us at all times. Reina Sharif. Thank you for all that you do. I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to talk to you about Muslim Equity Project. I enjoyed presenting in front of everyone and informing you on the topic. I hope and wish we can continue this. Abigail Ogapi. Thank you for all your hard work you've done in the past years at Cedar Heights. We're all thankful for this teacher and wish you a happy retirement. Maddox Wilk. I would really like to have a few more minutes to recess. It is hard to sit still when we don't have time to run around. The zones have made recess even tougher. Can we get rid of the zones next year? I would really, really, really like to have two library days a week. I love library and would like to have more time. I really liked pajama days this year. I wouldn't mind more of those. I would like to be able to bring my stuffed animals to school for stress relief without a note. Bye! I want to say, my teacher at Sawyer Woods is awesome. I like his monthly challenges. He talks to us. Archer Jackson. I am a 2nd grader at Sawyer Woods Elementary. What I like best about school are my friends and playing with them at recess. I do think it is a little bit crowded on the bus. We have to have three in a seat. I have a friend. All the teachers are actually very nice. I think the specials help you more than the other sun teachers, so you get some more learning. I don't really see my principal at all, and I wish I saw him more. I only saw him for two seconds. I think we should have lunch and then recess, because I want food in my belly before I play. I'm looking forward to going to Grass Lake for Odyssey and having a little bit of both grades in one class. That is the end of the online student comments.
Thank you very much, and you did that so well, Ms. Curry.
Yes.
And it's, it's great to hear from members.
We do have in-person general comments here?
Yes, yes, if you'll bring them forward, please. Thank you so much. Okay.
And I'll go with the gentleman first.
And I'm just going to go through the order that I have them here. First up is Mr. Tim Martin.
Good evening, I'm Tim Martin, and I live in the Creighton area, and I think I know most of you already. So I'm just going to try to begin here as the KEA president and an individual speaking on behalf of our members. I'm here today to share with you just a couple of concerns that KEA has brought forward to KSD this year in an attempt to make things better and to correct problems. People on this board have even come to me and expressed, "How can we don't know about these topics?" Well, I'm going to make a suggestion, that you start asking questions of this district. Don't buy into the ideas that the concerns brought forward by us are frivolous or nuisance issues. I will only have time to share two issues with you today, and I'll let you decide for yourself. Earlier this year, our nurses and health techs were screaming for assistance. The COVID issues that they were dealing with were beyond what they could handle. Instead of using the COVID funds that were provided by the state and the federal government to add the proper number of people to support them, this district chose instead to write an email to all of them, asking them to work smarter. Our nurses begged those in power to please come spend a day with them to see what they do, and I even personally asked about this request and was told, "We got their emails, but we didn't reply." I asked them instead, then, "Come with me. Let's both spend the day walking in the shoes of our nurses." But that too fell on deaf ears. Is the health of our students and the workload of our nurses frivolous to you? I will also tell you a little bit about how our district begs to be inclusive, yet while we have administrators working in our, in our schools, who are working frantically to alienate and make our own students feel less than they are. This is evidenced by one school who removed the non-traditional family section of the health curriculum. When KEA asked this district, "Why is this being allowed?", instead the district said, "Well, it's okay, that doesn't require until next year." So I ask you, how do our students who are living in foster care, who are being raised by same-sex parents, who are being raised by their grandparents or other family members feel? All I can tell you is, I don't know, and I'll probably have to wait till next year. KEA prides itself on being creative and collaborative when it is reciprocated. We have tried to discuss problems and solve issues with KSD, only to be gaslighted and to have our concerns deflected. When we are unable to solve a problem, we have to switch our ways, which, so we have moved to grievances. Since January, we have filed more than 20 grievances. In most school districts, two to three grievances would be concerning, but this is not an issue in Kent. When I have filed grievances and have not been able to resolve them for our kids and for our teachers, it forces me to look at other options. So I will be sharing with you when I'm done, the paperwork that I have filed at OSPI today, so you know. I have filed a community complaint, which is another attempt to try to help resolve issues around our most vulnerable students. This district is knowingly aware that they are grossly out of compliance with their IEP minutes and providing the support for special needs students and teachers. As far as topics that we have tried to work through with KSD this year, that list is exhaustive, and there isn't enough time for me to share everything that I have struggled with to get corrected for our teachers, students, and our community. But I beg you to please ask questions, demand answers, and if those answers sound frivolous to you, then, or don't make sense, I beg you to investigate. If you want to talk to me, my door is open. I welcome your questions. I welcome those conversations to help make our schools the amazing places that they are, and to support our teachers and students with the things that they need and deserve.
Next up is Ms. Cheryl Porter. Is she in the room? Cheryl Porter? There, thank you.
Hi, my name's Cheryl Porter, and I have four children at Sawyer Woods Elementary currently, and I just wanted to express gratitude to all the teachers, administrators, bus drivers, janitorial and cafeteria staff that made it possible for us to have in-person learning this year. It was a big help to my children to be able to be with their friends and to be with their teachers in person. It takes many people to make a school year happen, and it's our duty as parents and as educators to protect and teach safety to our children. That's everything.
All right, moving on, the next is Penny. Oh, boy. To Si?
Si.
Si, thank you.
First of all, thank you very much for hearing me out, and my vision is not perfect, but I will try my best. And 14, 14 days ago, I become American citizen. With one little flag on my hand and the oath on the other, I promised that I would, I would stand up for all Americans and I will, I will bear arms when it's needed. So today, I'm armed with gratitude and loves. So my son is not verbal. I mean, he can speak, but he's not verbal. He is in high camp, but he wasn't ever able to tell me what's going on in school and what's going on in his life. And I rely so much on the teachers at school to tell me to fill that gap in. Then I appreciate them for doing that for my child. Also, he runs like a dinosaur. He really does, and his name is Rex. So it's kind of my fault, but, but I, 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 I thanks the Kentucky tree to allow the track to happen, so he finally made his first soccer goal after two and a half years with plenty of time being bullied at the soccer first year. So I appreciate, I thank you for what you have done for me and my, my children. Thank you very much.
There's one minute left in the 30 minutes of comments.
That doesn't give them enough time to speak, really, yeah.
Right, so.
So I think we're going to have to.
Continue it to the end?
Yeah. I have two cards here, and they're general, okay. All right, we'll have to do that.
Can I make a motion that we break protocols so those last two comments can be read? Is that possible?
Yeah, just the two general comments?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion? Let's call for a vote. All those in favor extending the public comments for the first two minutes, or for the first, last two people to speak, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. All right, we're on to Ms. Leila Jones.
Hello, and thank you to Superintendent Bella, President Hamada, and School Board members. In light of the recent tragedy in Texas, I come to you tonight to speak about school safety, and I wish I didn't have to, but I cannot in good conscience keep silent, sorry. I'm the Vice President of KEA this year, and we have had repeated concerns about campus safety this year. In October, a group of unknown teens were climbing over a fence and walked onto an elementary campus, and one of our teachers saw this and called, and those students or teenagers were still on campus when kids were sent to recess. This particular teacher went out to tell the people to leave, and oddly enough, she was the one that got in trouble for leaving her classroom to ask these people to leave. In October, we brought that issue to the district, and we were dismissed, and the issue was sidestepped. I was really fired up about it then, and I still am, but in, in this time since October, there have been multiple instances at our secondaries, and they've all been handled in very different ways. And in the wake of Uvalde, which is just in the last couple of weeks, we've had more reports come forward. Guest teachers don't have keys to lock their outside doors. Doors are being propped open. We even had, just within the last week, an Uber delivery being able to get into campus to deliver coffee, and a news reporter being able to get on campus. These concerns were again brought to the district just this week, and they were again dismissed and sidestepped by saying that we need to look at food deliveries instead, and that needs to be addressed. These are just a few examples of serious safety concerns that have come my way, and luckily, none of these incidents have resulted in tragedies. But I'll leave you with this. As a student in the Kent School Districts, I had a plan for what would happen in a lockdown or an active shooter, or if I had to get out, I had a plan. As a teacher in Kent, for my kindergarteners, I have a plan, what to do in a lockdown, what to do if there's an active shooter, how do we get out of this room? And as a district, we need a better plan. It's never our schools until it is. Thank you for your time.[1795.53]
Okay, and the last speaker is Tamia. Lucretia?
Tamara, Ms. T.
Tamara, excuse me.
Hi, Superintendent Vella and the members of the board. So my name is Tamara Lucretia. Some people know me as Ms. T. And I, you know, I do a lot of speaking, I do a lot of conversating with community members. I have my own personal feelings on a lot of things that is just my own. I am speaking in regards to policy and procedures. Write it down, policy and procedures. We, as adults, we as leaders in the district, we as leaders in the community, it is so imperative that we follow our own policies and procedures on things. And I'm going to speak directly in regards to, obviously, something that is here, is Gavin and Ms. Hanson. All of the things that have followed through in regards to, we can call it censorship, we can call it banning, whatever you want to call it. My question is, was policy and procedure followed? Because everything else that followed after that is a distraction. It is important that we role model behaviors that we expect of our students. And if we cannot do that, how can we walk through our lives with our heads high and call ourselves role models for these students? This policy, this procedure, was it followed? That's my question. Was it followed to fidelity? If it wasn't, why? If it was, let's have a conversation. When I looked that up myself, it was like, if it was a kid, they can go to the bar with me. It's that old. We are not relevant. We are not current. And I don't know if you guys noticed, but these kids are woke enough to understand what we're doing. And they don't need us in a lot of things. I have asked if I can be, you know, would you like me to step in and help you? And they're like, no, Misty, we got this. We'll come get you when we need you. That's where I'm at. I am going to hold everybody accountable to policies and procedures in place. That's all that we have. If we can skirt through and manipulate it in whatever makes it feel right at the time, to me, that reads, I am half-power and I have privilege. And we've played that game enough. The marginalized communities have been oppressed, and we've played that game enough. This is your legacy. I'm going to remember exactly everything that happened, and I will hold everyone to account. Thanks.
All right, we're on to 4.0. And that would be our interim superintendent report. And I'm going to call on our interim superintendent, Mr. Vella, to give his report.
Mr. Vella.
Thank you, President Hamada. With regard to finishing strong, as graduation ceremonies begin this week, we will celebrate the first in-person graduations since the pandemic began. The class of 2022 has survived a pandemic. They have come together and remained a class, supporting one another in times of uncertainty and division, and still maintain a focus on a better future for themselves and their loved ones. We are proud of our graduates and their perseverance to achieve this remarkable success in these challenging moments of history. We're in our graduates' hands, the hope of the futures held, and we believe we are in good hands. We congratulate, congratulate our seniors and their families and wish them the very best as they leave our halls to pursue their next steps. Whether it be college, career, military service, or another path they choose to start the next phase of their life's journey. Climate surveys. As we finish the school year strong, this year's family and staff climate surveys are now open. We ask our families and staff to complete a survey before June 17th to tell us about their KSD experiences. We value this important input and thank everyone in advance for taking a few minutes to provide their feedback results of the surveys. Will be shared late this summer. This aligns with our commitment to continuous improvement driven by our core values of equity and excellence. Starting Strong. We'll be starting strong the next school year with the new Associate Superintendent of Human Resources. One objective of my priority initiatives this year was to complete a human resources review and hire a new Associate Superintendent of HR. I am pleased to welcome back to our Kent School District community, Mr. Damon Hunter. Mr. Hunter is not new to our district, as he served as a director with Human Resources team from 2014 to 2018. We are fortunate to have him rejoin our team in July as we prepare to continue supporting our staff, who in turn are successfully preparing all students for their futures. Bond Task Force. In preparing our students for their futures, we must provide the most effective and modernized learning spaces possible. To that end, we are recruiting parents and guardians to participate in a bond task force to provide input for a 2023 bond measure. This task force will work with our capital planning team to formulate recommendations about what will be included in the bond measures for much-needed renovations to school buildings, some of which are over 50 years old with furniture to match. All students deserve a safe, healthy learning environment with modernized buildings, updated furnishings, furnishings, and access to state-of-the-art technology. Family and Community Listening Sessions. On a more somber note, we have seen school violence across our nation, and our hearts have been broken. Our thoughts remain with the families and friends impacted by these tragedies. Please know, safety is at the forefront of our KSD planning for next year. And as a reminder, there will be a listening session on June 15th from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. to obtain feedback on our safety programs. Listening sessions are an important part of our strategic planning and communications process as we fulfill one of our goals in continuing to build community relationships with two-way communication. Staying Strong. Fairwood and Neely O'Brien Honored. And in communicating good news and staying strong through the end of the school year, I want to congratulate students from Fairwood and Neely O'Brien Elementary Schools. They were recently honored for their high-speed typing skills by Learning.com, a partner in helping students build keyboarding skills. As you may guess, typing proficiency continues to be one of the most important skills students can learn to prepare them for post-secondary education and a career. I am proud to announce that 18 of our 28 elementary schools achieved 90% in keyboarding accuracy. And across our 28 elementary schools, the typing accuracy is in the upper 70%. Creating spaces for students to learn and be successful is a primary goal, and I am inspired by our students' achievement and by the teachers who directly support this work. Pine Tree Elementary Teacher Receives Grant. I also want to congratulate Rachel Collier of Pine Tree Elementary on being awarded an Ellison Education Grant. These grants are awarded to K-12 teachers who are regarded as Washington State's most effective, innovative, and inspirational public school teachers. The grant funds academic enrichment curriculum for students or professional learning experiences for the teacher's current practice. I applaud Ms. Collier for going above and beyond in receiving this prestigious grant. I'm looking forward to our graduation ceremony and seeing the recommendations that will be coming from the Bond Task Force this fall. I am eager to listen to our community's feedback on our safety programs as we continue preparations for the next school year. And a hearty congratulations to our Employees of the Year once again, and a fond farewell to our retirees as the school bell rings one last time on their notable careers in education in KSD. As we near the end of our school year, I think about finishing strong in the midst of diversity and adversity. I believe we can still find hope in our students, in our families, in our staff, and in our greater Kent School District community as we work together. And we stay the course in preparing all students for their futures. Thank you, this concludes my report.
Thank you, interim superintendent Vella. And right now, again, a little housekeeping. This is your last call to make testimony and get it into us in the blue box. If anybody, you know, this is what we set up, so we do have to have some parameters. So if anybody needs to know a comment or something, it has to be in the box, so. So we're all aware of that. I want to make sure you all, we're not making you an exception, we're following the rules. And now we're on to our legislative update. And our Director Farah from Afar is going to lead us in that. Good evening, Mr. Farah.
Thank you, thank you, President Hamada. I feel that we had a great meeting on June 1st, 2022. I would like us to continue the discussion on the district priority. As you all know, that we can team up with neighboring school districts who have the same issues that we are struggling with. And if I can name it, just, you know, a couple of them, Auburn and Federal Way. They are both faculty county, and I'm sure they have the same struggles. Although we have a larger and more diverse student body, but there are certain things that we can team up with them. Also, team up with the rest of the school district in the state and then make sure that we advocate for the same things. The WASTA Handbook of All Priorities WASTA has will be coming out late this summer, and as I said many times, it will be really, I will put together a Microsoft spreadsheet and then share it with you, and we can kind of figure out, you know, what priorities that we can communicate with WASTA. That, for me, is the, in the meantime, what I like to do is to continue thinking about what are the things that we're struggling with. And if you come up with some idea, please don't hesitate to share with me so I can put it into the spreadsheet. I will also continue meeting with interim superintendent Vella and Ms. N'Pelo to align priorities and also continue having a conversation with Dr. Harmon and Mr. Raver. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Farah. We're on to 6.0 presentation, and I'd like to call on interim superintendent Vella for introductions.
Thank you, President Hamada. I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Jamie Fraser, Director of Human Resources and Operations, who will be introducing our guests tonight.
Thank you. Perfect, okay. Good evening, President Hamada, members of the board, Superintendent Vella, Ms. Curry. Tonight I have the opportunity to introduce the Moss Adams team who conducted our HR review. Tonight, they will be presenting their final report with us. And to introduce the team, we have Colleen Rosilis on Zoom tonight, Tammy Lor, manager, and Jessie Linert, senior consultant, and Jenny Fox, senior consultant as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Colleen, who is a partner at Moss Adams.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having us. It's great to see you all tonight. We're really happy to be here and happy to be presenting you the results of our organizational and process assessment. If you could go to the next slide, please. So as interim superintendent Vella mentioned, I mean, it was a priority this year to address human resources underneath the goal of developing and retaining a diverse and premier workforce. And so one of the initiatives here was to assess the HR department, supporting this goal, looking at risk in the department, looking at the hiring, staffing, and evaluation practices. Really, this work, it was designed to be a holistic assessment of the HR department. And so while we were addressing the top bullet, if you will recall from our initial presentation, all of the work that we're doing is in support of all of Goal Four, with the idea that as we bolster up the HR department, we are going to help you to move forward with everything underneath Goal Four, supporting retention, supporting growing your internal leaders, supporting your professional development and coaching, supporting getting competitive salaries for staff, all of these pieces. And I also want to say before we get into this that it truly was a delight to work with everyone on your team. We found across the district, everyone from the board to the staff extremely committed to serving students and staff. And, and we had a really wonderful time getting to know your team, working with all of you. And everyone is very committed to transformation within the Human Resources Department with the goal of better serving students, and we really commend you for that. So I'm going to hand it over to Tammy to talk about our work and how we are, how we performed it and what we learned.
Great, thank you, Colleen, and thank you, everyone, for having us in person. I think this is my first in-person presentation since 2020, so thank you. I'm very excited to be here, back in the state of Washington. So this is just a quick reminder of our scope of work and all of the elements that we promised to deliver to you in our report. Really, what we focused on are people, processes, systems, and culture. So did we have the right types of resources to be able to achieve the goals that we had already set? How was our structure supporting the ability to achieve those goals? What were our processes? What were some of the bottlenecks or potential obstacles to achieving what we needed to do on a regular basis? What are the systems that support our work? And then, of course, how does HR have, how has HR shaped its own internal culture? As well as how does it help support the shape of the culture across the district? So all of this is contained within the report, just wanted to provide a quick reminder. I'm actually going to have Jenny talk about our methodology.
Thank you. So to guide our assessment, we first looked at lots of different documents, including policies and procedures, organizational charts, and different department forms. We also performed multiple interviews within the HR department with board members as well as key stakeholders, including principals, directors, and those out in different buildings. We also conducted a management survey, again, to get more feedback from key stakeholders. Again, that was to principals, directors, supervisors, to get that feedback from a wide range of people. And lastly, we did a peer benchmarking with three different districts around the area in Washington. And for that assessment, we looked at different things from what kind of systems they use, performance metrics, internal HR structure, to again, guide our recommendations. And next, before we go into our recommendations, we do have several commendations. Again, it was a pleasure to work with everyone within the department and here at the district. It was clear from everyone that we talked to that within the department, the employees are really dedicated to developing the district, again, to build on the students. And there's a really strong customer service orientation that really builds up the culture there. There's also improved collaboration across the different departments, including with IT and risk management, again, to support really the district. And lastly, continued resilience in face of the numerous challenges. As you all know, there were lots of impacts from COVID, there was a restructure and lots of leadership changes. And so everyone in the department really came together and came through all of these challenges. And these commendations are really. And these commendations are really strengths that we built on and can be a foundation for our recommendations, which Tammy will go into next.
Great. Thank you, Jenny. Just really want to reiterate these things. You know, when we met with stakeholders, we heard this would have been a very different conversation two years ago. So there has been significant improvement that was noted by stakeholders even over the last two years, which have been admittedly very challenging for school districts across the nation. So I am going to talk a little bit about some of our recommendations. The first area we'd like to talk about is related to strategy and structure. As Jenny mentioned, there has been pretty continuous leadership turnover in HR. We, as interim superintendent Vella mentioned earlier, there is a new associate superintendent of HR, which I may refer to as A S H R for brevity purposes. And so it's really a great time to start to think about how do we move beyond our ability to just sort of keep the lights on, which is where we've been for the last couple of years, and just adapting to the numerous changes that COVID did bring our way. We had these numerous leadership changes, and so now we're very well positioned to be able to develop an operating plan that really proactively defines, these are our priority initiatives. This is what's required in terms of resources to be able to move the department forward from where it is today to how it can help support that Goal Four and the district's goals as a whole. So this is a great time to be able to do that. Within the report, we did also provide an implementation plan that could help inform that work that reflects all of the recommendations included within our report. As Jenny also mentioned, there have been several reorganizations over the last three to five years. The district had some budget challenges and reduced the positions down and sort of consolidated them into an HR generalist model. That model has been working extremely well for the district. We heard a lot of very positive feedback that building administrators can pick up the phone and call one person, and they are able to help support them for their HR needs or point them in the right direction if they're not the appropriate contact. So that model is actually working quite well. We also did note that there are some functions that have moved over. Last fall, I believe, risk management, professional development, and labor relations that all moved over. So just a lot of changes that have been going on. And within this current structure, a few different things are really going on. So we have a lot of work that's concentrated at the leadership level in the absence of the A S H R. So, for example, all of the investigations and employee relations work occurs at the executive director or assistant director level, and most of the allocation process is also sort of focused on that level as well. We also have a missing managerial level within that department. So we have the ability for people to go from a specialist to an assistant director, which is great, but we also want to sort of build in the ability for there to be an intermediate position. We have noticed that some people will leave the department and maybe stay within the district in order to seek promotional opportunities. So we want to make sure that this is a safe department where there is career growth opportunities, where we can delegate down from leadership to be able to support that career path for employees.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, and under those suggestions, move risk management and accommodations back to employee support and align with leaves teams, and then elevate the assistant director of employment support that oversees risks, leaves, and employee relations to reflect the expansion of this role. Now, I certainly recognize that that's creating steps and career ladders and that, but I'm somewhat troubled. Employee relations is constant in terms of needs, and I just don't see the parallel between that and risk management.
Yeah, so employee relations, we are recommending a separate employee relations manager position to be able to be a dedicated support role that's separate from risk management, leaves, and accommodations. Yeah, that's in one of our appendices where you can see those additions within the organization, the proposed organization chart. So I'm sorry if there was any confusion there. So we were recommending that risk and leaves and accommodations all come back together because there is so much synergy there. There's a lot of collaboration that does need to occur. We are also recommending that the district develop a dedicated employee relations position to be able to provide that proactive support, help manage the actual investigation processes where appropriate. You're always going to have that upper level leadership involved in those processes, but also think about what is the training that we can be providing out to building staff, differentiate between what should be handled at the building and what needs to be escalated to HR, and also support proactive mediation and training so that we can avoid those issues from escalating.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So I think that actually sort of summed up. Thank you for my sections. So some of the key areas that we do recommend is a couple of new manager positions. One is a repurposed position. One is a brand-new position to develop that career ladder for employees that they want to stay within that department and really grow their expertise in school district HR because it really is a unique beast. Support employee relations very proactively, think about that mediation. We are happy to provide additional feedback on that area as well. Align risk management and leaves because there is a lot of coordination and very close relationship that needs to occur there. We want to recognize that there have been a lot of changes to the organization structure in the last few years, and this represents another change. So we just want to be cognizant of that. We want to make sure that these changes are well communicated out to staff so that there's a good understanding of what we're doing and why. And with that, we'll need to clarify roles and responsibilities as things move around. Any other questions on strategy and structure, or I'm happy to take questions at the end? Okay. Okay, moving on to the HR team development, this will be pretty high level because it's somewhat repetitive with what we just described. So we want to make sure that we're supporting career development for the HR employees through those structural changes, through building that career ladder, as well as developing individualized development plans. So what we like to see are goals that are developed in alignment with the operational plan for the department that then align with the district's overall strategic plan and identify some sort of skills and expertise that we could bring into the team through targeted trainings to help support the overall department's success. We will also need to continually assess workloads as reorganizations are put into place. The HR generalists do have quite a bit of work on their plate, but that restructuring that we just described, we move some of that work around, and so that might be appeased within that. And then we also want to call out that the frontline implementation may result in additional work for the department in the short term or in the long term. At this point in time, we don't have any data to inform what that would look like, but that's something to certainly keep your finger on the pulse of. And then lastly, again, a lot of change has been going on. You have a lot of good faith within this department and good leadership already in place that's done a good job of communicating what they can out to staff, but we want to just make sure that that's very intentional because of the series of very extreme changes, I shouldn't say extreme, the series, the amount of changes and the frequency of changes that have occurred over the last three to five years. We just don't want staff to be burnt out since they are so dedicated and resilient. Okay, over to Jessie.
All right. Good evening, y'all. We are going to talk about customer-facing processes. So if you are playing presentation bingo, you've hit the blacka already when we're talking about change. A lot of that is a primary driver. We already heard about the impact of that internally within HR, and now we're looking at what the impact of that to those customer-facing processes. So really broadly, when we look at customer-facing processes, as is commonly seen in organizations with a lot of, another one, change, both internally and cyclically, as the nature of the school district, previously developed policies and procedures and guidance documentation isn't always readily accessible or consistently shared across new individuals. I know Ms. T is jumping out of her seat at this one. So, yeah, this is making sure everyone's paying attention. So for what has been developed within the district, we are looking at the, we're looking at the district and opportunities to update that documentation and those policies and procedures. So a key part of our recommendation includes not only updating policies and procedures and sharing out how HR roles responsibilities have shifted, but also the additional resources that are available within HR for the staff at the building level to access. So a key outcome here is that any new documentation and updates to policies and procedures and that, those guidance tools and communication about roles and responsibilities is clear, concise, accessible for folks, both within HR and also at the building level. So we'd also like to highlight a couple of key processes that are also opportunities for HR and the district to advance their practice to achieve improved outcomes. So as you can see, performance evaluations, employee relations and investigations, hiring processes, and employee on, the employee onboarding and experience are all processes with outcomes that have a high impact on the safety, satisfaction, and success of district employees. So throughout this engagement, we'd also, again, like to call out that the department has already taken strides to assess and streamline and update process documentation for its performance evaluations and is aligning a lot of its process improvement work with upgrades to the system environment. So looking now at the tech. We are, we, as part of this engagement, we obviously looked at people, processes, systems. This covers that systems component and the ways that technology supports HR's work. So we observed that several core functions really relied heavily on a lot of manual processes and was really spreadsheet-driven. Manual processes inherently present challenges when undertaking efforts to streamline and automate workflows and can lead to inefficiencies and questions about data integrity. Additionally, many different systems are used to store different types of personnel information, which can make it really difficult to locate and then keep all that information up to date. So, for example, we're using TalentEd, A S O P, Skyward, and soon we'll have Frontline coming online. So those are just a few of the systems that capture data, and in some instances, these systems require duplicate entry because the same, because the systems are not able to be integrated. So what to do? With the implementation of Frontline, there's a really significant opportunity to address several of the challenges around position control, staffing allocations, and information management in general. However, this will require really enhanced and intentional collaboration between IT and HR as relevant data and business processes are evaluated and the impact, the timelines, the training, and the support tools are developed. So in the report, we provide a checklist that can be used to support the implementation to reduce downtime and maximize user acceptance. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to the district to talk about next steps.
All right. Thank you to the Moss Adams team for all the work that you have done on this HR review. It was really nice meeting you all through this process. It's been a pleasure working with you. We look forward to working with our superintendent and our new associate superintendent, Mr. Hunter, for the implementation and the recommendations. So I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Vella.
Thank you. Got further questions?
Do we have a discussion?
Well, obviously, the high turnover of generalists is an ongoing concern, and trying to learn new processes certainly, I realize that the data driving will ultimately give you a much clearer picture of where you're at, but I'm very concerned about overload of staff in terms of the changes because, I mean, they've got to support teachers. I mean, we got to make the system work, and we have to deal with unusual family circumstances constantly. So I, I guess I'm asking, is there a checkoff system to see staff stress?
No, not a checkoff system. We do have specific guidance within our workload analysis or assessment section that talks about the steps to take to assess workload over time. In addition to that, we also did note the same concerns with the HR generalists. They're very successful. They do have a lot on their plates, and their workloads can fluctuate year to year or day to day or week to week. And the benefit of having this model is that you can say, I can say, hey, Jenny, I'm really overloaded. Can you please help me with this because you're providing the same service just across the different schools? We also did recommend the addition of two additional assistants to be able to specifically support the HR generalists. So that's another component, just to help with that workload.
Okay.
And provide a career ladder.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I have a question about peer benchmarking you talked about. Can you tell me a little bit about that and how different districts were chosen? Because those aren't usually districts we compare ourselves with in different ways. So I'm kind of curious why those districts were chosen.
Sure. Our methodology was that we went through O S P I's data and looked at, I think it was the, we pulled the most 10 comparable-sized districts in terms of student population and maybe geographic size, and then we presented that list to the district and said, please pick five. And these were the three that had responded out of the five.
Thank you.
I noticed in the report that you mentioned Frontline and that implementation. Is Frontline a full-service H R I S system? Like, it'll do payroll, I mean, like SAP, right? It does payroll and it does, it does management of reviews and things like that. It can hold all that, and it feeds into payroll, and it generates checks and all that. So is Frontline a full-service H R I S system?
That's a really good question. When we conducted the review and assessment of Frontline, it was presented as an overlay. So you have a lot of these systems that are already in place that people already use, and this is the overlay that is the single point of entry in order for people to understand what data is going where, ensure consistency of that information getting entered into the right place, and then through that, the data will flow to the relevant places that are unique to the people that are using that system, like payroll. Does that help answer your question?
Sort of. I'm just, it's just curious to me. I mean, I think I asked this question when we were talking about Frontline, is, you know, because there are systems that you just buy modules and then it just, it does all of that.
Hundred percent.
It feeds to payroll, it does reporting, it manages, you know, reviews and all that. So you have everything in one place, so.
Absolutely. And another good thing to remember is that there, you're also needing to coordinate with systems that you have no influence over. And so there are other state systems, and so when you are doing that kind of technology assessment, and that's also a great question that the district can follow up with in their IT department, based on what we heard and what we learned, there are, there is a challenge in balancing the, that full-service module and its ability to integrate and connect and talk with other systems that we have no influence or ability to change. So all of those components, like the business need, the efficiency, the integration, what you are able to do in-house, but then also what you need to connect with externally, were factors that went into understanding Frontline and how it could really integrate and streamline and improve how HR is entering, capturing, and also pulling data.
Okay. And when you're talking about risk management, are you talking about things like making sure we're following all the laws on leaves and employee relations and making sure our job, our job, our 21-year-old job description, our job descriptions are up to date and things like that? Is that what, part of what you're talking about with risk management?
Yeah, the risk management function is things like protected leaves, insurance, those types of thing, L and I claims.
Right.
So that's what, that's what's within that function. We do talk about job descriptions within the performance evaluation process and section, so that's work that would happen elsewhere within the department.
And also, risk management would be making sure we're following all the relevant hiring practices, things like that. So we're documenting all that, that we're following. So that's part of risk management as well?
That would probably fall under the directors that are over those sections.
But we're doing that, right? We're making sure that we're following all that.
Correct.
I'm going to go to your slide where it's customer-facing process.
We're making sure that we're following all that.
Correct.
I'm going to go to your slide where it's customer-facing process, your bullet point, communicate roles and responsibilities, including available resources within HR. Can you give me a visual of how that would work and how that would be an improvement to what we're doing today?
Sure. A visual about communicating roles, responsibilities, and available resources. So, a lot of this has to do, again, with how, after this assessment, and we kind of start to shift things around and roles and responsibilities, we hire individuals, we assess workloads, and we move things into a really stable place, then communicating, educating our HR generalists, who then can be that one-stop, no-wrong-door connection point for our building administration. And so, what that looks like is a couple of different things. The one aspect of that is educating HR generalists and creating updates to really clarify those roles and responsibilities. But then, when you communicate that going forward to building administrative staff, that can take the form of anything like checklists. It could take the form of town halls, luncheon learns, little how-tos, FAQs. It could be any number of methods in order to best communicate not only with the recipient but provide kind of that updated, really easily accessible, clear, concise, compelling information that at least get people started on the right path, right? There's nothing more arduous than going to an FAQ and having to scroll through 65 pages just to try and find what you're looking for. And so, the goal here really is to evolve and create, you know, kind of internally what we like to call like an enhanced directory almost. So, we get that clear, concise breakdown of what HR can answer for you and then at least get the phone call, right? Get the connection, and then have HR work really collaboratively together to connect people in, that may live in different departments in order to provide that kind of information. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. It gives me some idea. Can I ask you, and again, there's no fault in what we've done here or what was in the past, but did you find in investigating that or what we currently had in place that we're way overworking our staff or, I hear you say we need more staff, staff, staff. I mean, I'm trying to get, I'm a visual person. I've got to have an on-hand, actual thing to, you know, all these bullet points are wonderful, but I want to, I'm just curious of, do you think that what we were trying to do was not working well or creating extra work? And this, these kind of alignments that you've mentioned here and responsibilities will improve that department is what I'm getting at, right? And did you find that our district was not having as much staff as other districts are sized to do that kind of work, or can you speak to that?
Sure. So, I think there's roles and responsibility clarification in two different areas. So, first is within the HR department. It's pretty clear right now to HR what person in HR does what. As we, you know, recommend reorganization, there's changes to that, and we just want to make sure that that's very clear and that we can push work down to the appropriate level if we have staff to be able to do so. So, then we're elevating leaders so that they're able to serve in a leadership capacity rather than being really in the weeds and day-to-day tasks. The other element is communicating roles and responsibilities between leaders across the district and HR. So, I can provide an example here. So, we met with lots of principals and directors and leaders across the district as part of this work. We had one person that was like, oh, well, I wanted HR to help me with this employee kerfuffle between two colleagues where someone didn't like the way someone had said something. Then we met with someone else who said, oh, I'm investigating harassment. And it's like, okay, we need to have consistency about what are the roles and responsibilities between you as a leader in the district and then HR as, you know, the central focus of our personnel matters. And there are roles and responsibilities, and it's not always, it's a lot of gray in that example. We do specifically want to build that capacity for supporting employee relations and investigations. So, if I were to expand upon that example, what we like to see is a dedicated employee relations individual to provide support, to provide training, to make sure that leaders understand what's their role in this, what level of investigation are they responsible for doing so that we are pushing things down to the right level while also serving as a resource and understanding what do we need to escalate? What needs to go to HR? And so, what we'll usually see is some building-specific guidance, some training that is provided in order to clarify those roles and responsibilities and let buildings and directors know that we have a mediation service available through HR. That would be an example. Is that helpful?
Yeah. I really appreciate that because that gives me some concrete, some of the things that have come to me.
Sorry, I couldn't pictionary it for you.
I appreciate that. I, like I say, I want to see how this is really going to work, okay? And real examples, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Further discussion?
I still, so, thank you for that, too, because my little, I worked in HR for 12 years, so my little brain, when you said that a principal's handling harassment, it's like, not going to HR is like, huh, that's alarm bells. One thing you said at the very beginning was you were looking at people, processes, and culture, and I don't think you really hit on culture and, because honestly, being blunt, we've had a lot of turnover in HR, even this year.
Yeah. That was actually in our commendations section. So, we did meet with everyone in HR and did hear a lot about the culture and heard a lot of great things. Jessie, I don't know if you want, you met with all of the generalists?
Oh, you bet I did. You bet I did. When we were looking at the culture of HR, we were really impressed by the level of commitment and passion that these individuals have for serving their schools. They really felt very strongly about being able to provide excellent service to building administrative staff, being able to answer their questions, being able to get them the right tools, being able to get them the right information. And we also heard a lot of really excellent comments about their peers. So, consistently, all of the HR generalists at that level were talking about one another in an extremely respectful, and in an extremely respectful way and in a way that was extremely supportive of one another, and then also very realistic of the kinds of challenges that one another faces on the day-to-day and very solution-oriented, very forward-looking. And so, it was not a bunch where we saw, oh, woe is me, wallowing, I can't do anything, things will never change. It was consistent and dedicated focus on how do I fix it? How do I fix it? Who do I talk to? What do I do? Because this is important. Our building staff are important, our students are important, my job is important, and my ability to provide services and connect with building administrative staff is extremely important. So, there was a really strong culture around, that was centered on that.
Right. Thank you.
And I would just add that, oh, and Colleen raised her hand. Great. So, again, that sort of ties back to the turnover that we saw was typically for promotional opportunities, so that again emphasizes the importance of having that career ladder built out within the department. Go ahead, Colleen.
Just got to get myself off mute. So, I want to provide just a little bit of context about turnover in general. So, there's high turnover, and I'm sure we've all heard of the great resignation. There's high turnover in the public sector in general right now, just among public servants. It's been a really rough couple of years, particularly in school districts. I know that you all are seeing that. We are seeing that across all of our clients. In HR in particular, there, it's just a high turnover environment. There are more jobs than people right now. So, we are seeing people take promotional opportunities in other districts because those opportunities are available. What we did not hear from your team was that people were leaving due to the culture, which my team members commented on. And, you know, I will just say anecdotally, a couple of weeks ago, I had a week where I had three different meetings with three different clients, completely unrelated, where people in HR quit via post-it note, you know, walked out at lunch and wrote, I quit, on a post-it note. So, that's not happening in your HR department. There, it could be a lot worse in terms of turnover. There certainly are opportunities to improve and shore up your team, but I think what you're experiencing is a lot more environmental and not necessarily related to the culture in the department.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm assuming we're pretty much done with questions because we have, well, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to take, I want to make sure we got all the questions in, and I know Director Farah is on, I didn't know if he.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Before I give a final.
Director Farah, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here, and I was listening, you know, attentively and making sure that, I want to thank Mas Adams for doing this investigation study on our HR. We've had challenges with HR, you're aware of, that's why we asked you to help us on that. But I just wanted to ask you, after you've done your investigation, are there any things or priorities that you would recommend more do in time or, you know, short, like a short-term and a long-term tests that you found that in our HR that we need to address? Are there any?
Sure. So, our report does include a prioritized implementation plan that clearly lists out each of the recommendations, the assigned priority level based on our team and collaboration with the HR leadership team, and a proposed timeline and set of resources to be able to achieve that. So, that's within the report. One of the top things that comes to mind was the very first item that we mentioned, which is thinking about that operational plan because you are in such a great position to be able to start aligning the work of HR with the overall district and really shape what you want that plan to look like, and that would also pull in other elements of your implementation plan. It's a great opportunity for your new associate superintendent of HR to really demonstrate what impact he will bring to the district.
Thank you. And I really appreciate, Colleen, when you said that we're not losing people because of culture. Turnover is, is, we know, it's something that happens with the economy and the job market that we have. So, it was really refreshing to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Farah. I just wanted to note, President Hamada, a couple of thank-yous and some shout-outs. First of all, to our Mas Adams team, I think about when we first started this process and presented this to the board, and to be here today and to listen to the hard work that was done, I wanted just a special, special thank you to the whole team. And I know we're going to continue to work together as we move forward with the next steps. The other one is really, oh, and by the way, for, the other piece is for anyone that was involved with those interviews. It's a lot to do, particularly when we were doing this, rubbing up for staffing allocations and those types of things. I wanted the board to know it was right in the middle of all of that, and so, this is my next shout-out, and that is to our HR, our whole HR team. You heard tonight the culture that is there, and this whole process is about continuous improvement, and they were just stellar in this whole process, and I'm sure our Mas Adams team can say that. So, I needed to make sure I said that tonight, and again, thank you to Mas Adams for your presentation.
And thank you to your HR team. Absolutely. A lot of dedication and work went.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. I'm sure we all appreciate that. And I'm just going to say, all of this is great. It can't sit on a shelf. We have to show action. That's exactly, I'm going to keep beating that drum. All righty, we're on to 7.0, 7.01, April 2022 financial statement, and that's just really, if anybody has any discussion, and we'll move right on.
I was just noting that the fund balance is down significantly in that, this most recent report from last year. And I was trying to figure out whether that's simply expenditures from ESER money or whether there's something else that jumped in there.
Thank you, Director Clark. I'll have Mr. Rarick, our executive director of finance, come up and explain that.
Okay. So, I'm going to direct your attention to the last three or four slides. I'll bring it up for the benefit of the audience. And I think you have this as well, right?
We do.
Is that showing up okay?
Yeah, page 24.
Do I maximize that or? Better. Okay. I recognize you have a long evening ahead of you, so I'll be brief in my comments here. But, to the question that was asked, so, on this chart, this is the tracking of the fund balance by month. You'll recall the last time we met, and I was projecting for you roughly a $80 million fund balance in April, and that's just about where we ended up. What Director Clark is referring to, I believe here, is this dip here that you see in the pink, the month of January, which seemed to stick out, right? And you might recall, board members, that we kind of went over that at the time, and what you see there is very clearly what Director Clark says is the, this is the time where we started to accelerate our claims under the Elementary Secondary Emergency Relief Act, ESER. And you see that in the second graph. So, you see that the pink, the, is that pink? I think it's pink. The pink line through January, which is our ratio of revenues to expenditures, was the lowest it had been in any previous four years, right? And then something changed, right? It changed in February, March, and April. What happened? We started claiming federal money. So, that's a good thing to key into because it reminds you that although we are fine financially right now, we do have a structural deficit. This money, this ESER money is not forever. So, we rely on that money to basically stay course with our prior-year trajectory, but as you know, that money ends in 2024.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Rarick. Appreciate it. We will be watching that closely. All right. So, we're now on to 8.0, and we must have some, we have no comments? We have comments.
This point of privilege, maybe we want to take a quick bio break or a break before, so we can focus?
The board can, might want to consider this, make it a motion to do that and then reconvene.
Move a five-minute break.
My second.
Call for the vote. All those in favor of taking a five-minute break signify by raising your right hand and saying aye. How about in the room? All right. The motion carries. All right, the motion carries. In person, and then we'll go to online. And the first one is Nicole Mulder. Is that correct? Mulder, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Members of the school board, President Hamada, Superintendent Vella. My name is Nicole Mulder. I am a community member, a KSD parent, a teacher, a former middle school JSA advisor, and a member of the LGBTQ community. And I'm speaking today to ask you to not remove Jack of Hearts from the library at Cedar Heights Middle School. Parents are entitled, in fact compelled, to instill values into their children. It's the most serious duty of parenthood, in my opinion. However, as a parent and a teacher, I do not have the right to decide what other people's children should value or what they should read. Just the same as the book challenger should not be the arbiter of morality for all children. If parents do not want their children reading certain books, the onus is on parents to be involved with their child's media consumption. Removing Jack of Hearts, a choice library book, not required curriculum, further is misguided as all KSD students have access to it through their digital KCLS card. If you remove Jack of Hearts from Cedar Heights, it doesn't remove access. It just makes it inequitable and sends the message that LGBTQ kids aren't welcome or are immoral. Additionally, most students from late elementary onward have unfiltered access to social media containing much more graphic material than Jack of Hearts, without the focus on consent and protection that Jack emphasizes. While the homophobic intentions of this book ban have been thinly veiled, under the guise of protecting children, I'm going to address it directly, as there have been no other book challenges in KSD's recent history. It's unacceptable to send the message to queer youth that they can be represented only if they are the right kind of gay. Horrifyingly, the IMC report repeatedly stated that it wasn't LGBTQ representation that was the problem, just the kind of representation. What makes Jack of Hearts so threatening to homophobes is that ultimately, Jack doesn't stand for a school principal and wider society that tries to cycle who he is. Ironically, when speaking about the unsupportive principle, on page 283, a character says, "I knew right then that he was one of those corporate types who say they have no problem with gay people as long as the gay people never kiss or hold hands or talk about boyfriends and just fade into the background." And again, when talking about the school community on page 330, "It's not just the culture here, too. It's straight culture everywhere telling queer people the right kind of way to be queer." I would argue that this book ban is perpetuating the culture that tells queer kids that it isn't okay to be who they are. You are on the wrong side of history if you vote to ban this book. Please do the right thing. Don't let us start the slippery slope of book banning because it won't stop at one. Thank you.
Next up is Gordon Glasgow.
President Hamada, board members, Superintendent Vella, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Gordon Glasgow. My wife and I have been residents of the Kent School District for 33 years. One of our foster kids attended Kent Schools, and we currently have two grandchildren in Kent Schools. And with regards to the book at question, there are two main themes in this award-winning book. One is the sex advice column written by Jack and focused on safe sex practices and the idea of consent. While this is an important topic that's covered in a medically accurate way and is the focus of much negative attention, I don't believe it's the most important theme. That would be the theme of how Jack responds to being stalked. He goes through a range of responses from annoyance to concern, to attempts to identify the stalker, to attempts to mollify the stalker. As the threats increase and expand to include his friends and family, Jack considers giving in to the stalker's demands in the hopes that the stalker will not follow him to college. In the end, thankfully, the stalker is identified and brought to justice in spite of the reluctance of school administration to take the threat seriously. Stalking is a form of bullying. It's a form of abuse that is all too common in our schools today. Children far younger than middle school have committed suicide as a result of bullying. Perhaps I'm more sensitized than others to this because I was bullied between fifth and eighth grades myself. I know what it feels like, but no one talked about it back then, and I felt quite isolated. Some people say these topics are too advanced for middle school students. I disagree. Young people at that age are becoming aware of their sexual identity, and they're certainly aware of bullying. It is important for young people to see themselves reflected in the things they read, whether that's about their sexual orientation or how they're being treated. And it is important that they have this information before they need it, whether that is about safe sex and consent or about the reality of bullying. Haven't we seen just recently how important it is to have the necessary information beforehand and not after decisions are made? This book does cover sensitive topics, and I would certainly not recommend that it be included as part of a curriculum or be required reading. But I consider it important as a resource that many students could relate to. I ask the board to keep this book available in the middle school libraries and leave it to the librarians to decide whether it's appropriate for each individual student. Thank you.
This is an important topic. I know there are a lot of passions. But we are now at nine o'clock, and I would like to kind of have the next three people line up over here. And that's Megan Carter, Scott Quinn, and Sucre Olo. And if you'll just come up and keep going, and unfortunately, we're gonna have to hold applause. We're gonna have a long night here, folks.
Hello, members of the board and Superintendent Vella. I've come here talking to you guys many, many times over, you know, disability access, and I feel equally as strongly about this. Our kids need to have access to books, and that includes all kids, not just kids like mine or like yours, all the kids in our district. They all deserve to be represented by books in the library, and they deserve to have equitable access to those books. It's just mind boggling that we're here tonight talking about a book ban in Kent School District in Washington State. It just, I can't believe we're here, honestly. A book that makes one person feel uncomfortable, that doesn't mean you get to take it away from other people. If I don't want my kids reading the Bible, does that mean that nobody's kids get to read the Bible? That makes no sense. It, you know, we have to parent our own kids. And, you know, I asked my sixth grader how he felt about this. We've been talking about it, and my second grader. I asked my sixth grader, what would you do if you pulled a book off the shelf and it made you uncomfortable? And he looked at me like I was nuts, and he said, I'd put it back. And I said, would you be damaged by it? Nope. I just put it back. There are lots of books I don't like. I don't like books about unicorns. I don't like books about princesses, you know? So I would just put it back. And my second grader had a similar response. That's what our kids do, but adults, we've gotten into this and mucked it all up. The kids are fine. They can handle it. Like, we don't give them enough credit. And I'm just, I'm so frustrated that we're even having to have this conversation and that there's even a risk of this book being pulled off the shelves and denying access to the very kids that desperately need it. So I really hope everybody thinks long and hard about the vote tonight. And make no mistake, this is a book ban. We can splice words. We can call it whatever you want. You're technically voting on an appeal tonight, but the result is banning a book. Full stop. So, thank you very much.
Esteemed members of the board, and I'm Superintendent Vella. My name is Scott Quinn. I am teacher librarian and technology integration specialist at Meeker Middle School. As a librarian, we have no interest in putting students at risk. Jack of Hearts was the subject of much research and debate before some of the libraries decided to add it to their collections. We looked for studies and evidence in high-quality journals showing a risk to students in having a book such as this available. We found none. What we did find were some of the studies that concerned those who filed the challenge. However, these deal specifically and exclusively with pornographic videos, neither of which is Jack of Hearts. We also found evidence that supported the importance of having a library collection that supports and affirms all of our students, including our LGBTQ students and their allies. We found evidence showing that, yes, some students, about 20% according to the CDC, are sexually active by the time they enter high school. So this is relevant. Eighth grade is right before high school. We found that the presence of a book such as Jack as part of an accepting environment could help students and even save lives. Several studies from Glisten and the Trevor Project specifically call out library collections as being a way we can support our students. All of this information is in reports that we gave where we meticulously counter the concerns that are raised by those who are worried about this book. Spoiler, one of those things where they talk about how within this story, Jack has had sex with an adult, never happens. That's a false rumor that is spread in the harassment of the main character. We are aware that this is not a book for all our middle school students. We are aware that some of our students do struggle with exactly what is covered in here, bullying and harassment and rumor mongering based on their sexuality. We are aware that by April, approximately 67% of our students in eighth grade are 14 years old, according to a extrapolation of the CDC birth data. 14 years old is even what those who are concerned about this book say is the interest level that pits our students. We are aware that we have students that Jack of Hearts will speak to. Therefore, it is in our obligation to make sure those students are represented in our library collection. Many students will find that it's not a book for him. That's how it should be. Every reader selects their home books. We have to protect the rights of our students to select their own books.
And on deck after Ms. Olo is Rose Castro, Barry Knowles, Jennifer Brown. So if you'll come up there.
Madam President, School Board Directors, Superintendent Vella, audience, great to see you all. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sucre Olo, Dr. Sucre Olo. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I wear many hijabs in community, because I don't wear hats. And including being a director of a division at the city of Seattle, supporting youth and families. I'm also a candidate for the open seat in the 47th Legislative District, a community member, a product of KSD, and a mom of two children right here in this district at Emerald Park. I'm here tonight, though, as a community member, wanting to share with you my personal story of being a product of this district. I came to this country, like many of the students in our district, from Somalia. I came here as a refugee at the age of 10, after spending about six years of my life in a refugee camp. I moved to Washington State, initially landing in Texas, and found a much more welcoming environment and grew up right here in this community. My first time in a classroom was in Mrs. Christie Kelly's class at Crestwood Elementary. She started at Crestwood and then went on later to Jenkins Creek. In her classroom, and I thought this was just me, I thought I was special, I thought I was her favorite, but it turns out that she made all the young people in her classrooms, all the scholars, feel loved and welcomed and invited and seen and valued for who they are. She made me, this refugee kiddo who just came to this country without family, without knowing English except the bad words, without much resources. She made me feel like I belong here. And that is what educators do every single day in our classrooms, helping to ensure that our young people are affirmed in who they are and who they want to become and who they're exploring on becoming. And this ban is in direct conflict with the work our educators do every day in our classrooms. It's in direct conflict with our values as a district of excellence, of inclusion, of equity. It's in direct conflict with the community that has raised me and the community that is raising the next generation of children who are, I saw someone's sweater or T-shirt, who are kind, who are loving, who see the value of every human life. Language matters. What we do. What we do, the entire board, to not do this. Do not do this to our children. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Israel Bella, and the community of Kentwood, Kentwood, sorry, Kent School District. I am on the way to graduating my third boy from Kentwood. We have a class of 2013, 2017, and we will have a class of 2025. We moved to Kent School District because it was a diverse, diverse district, beautiful district, and we had heard wonderful things about it. My husband and I made the choice to leave Seattle and come here to this little neck of King County, and we've not regretted one bit coming to where we are. I'm here today because I grew up in a very conservative Christian household, and you become a product of your environment, and I didn't know what I didn't know. But as I grew up and got married and moved to the area and got to meet more wonderful people from across nations, really, because we're such a melting pot here in King County in Western Washington, I recognized not only privilege that I had from my parents, my hard-working parents, Native American mom, first-generation immigrant Mexican dad. I recognized that, you know, they had really done a great job in making sure that I had come up and had everything I needed. And I wanted to do the same thing for my children. But I quickly learned that not everybody has that same type of privilege, and not everybody has those relationships with their parents where they can communicate openly and discuss what's important to them, not only morally, but, you know, as it relates to, you know, our communities that we live in, and acceptance and equity and all of the, you know, all of those beautiful key words that we love to throw out, but what do they really mean? Books matter. Words matter. Books have saved many children like myself. When I could not access books on my culture to learn more about my Mexican background before my dad decided to move us to Mexico, I went to my librarian and asked, "Can you help me find some things so I can learn more about Mexico because I think we're gonna live there?" And that was the start of a beautiful journey with books, to the point that I'm now a writer, I'm a bestselling author, I'm a terrible public speaker, but I could sit at a keyboard and pound words, but that's not enough. I'm here today to tell everyone, you know, we have to move forward, we have to make things accessible to children who may not have it at home, who may not see it at home, and that you please vote, you know, to what is important, not only your conscious, but to all of our students. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barry Knowles. You know, the book has a lot of wonderful themes to it. It's just a shame that it's drenched with pornography, and where it should be located is an adult section of a bookstore. All right, if they had not put that stuff in there, we'd be having a different discussion. So let me give you two definitions. Morals, an individual's accepted standard of right and wrong. Ethics, structured system of principles that govern conduct. What we are doing with books and books like this in our school system, why do we have them? The school system is changing our children's morals and perverting their ethics of our education system. Books like this in our school library demonstrate the indirect method of teaching by the simplicity of having a trusted library teacher hold it out in their hands to children and offer it for their consumption where it couldn't be taught in the classroom. Books are either educational, or they are for entertainment and no other reason. We do not need to be teaching them or entertaining them with pornography. Only through the lack of morality and the failure of community-accepted ethics would this material ever be made available to our youth in schools. This literature is completely contradictory to many people's religious beliefs, and for that reason alone, it should be considered not to be available in the school system. Whose kids are they? Have you seen the film? More than 45,000 students did not return to public schools after COVID. COVID gave the opportunity for parents to look inside the classroom and see what's being taught, and they were disgusted by it, many of them. This kind of exposure to immoral material is taking place all over the country, just not here. A reasonable person should deduct that this indirect teaching is a continuation of the perversion of our children, the dissolution of the American family unit, and the contradiction to religious teachings. The state constitution contains provisions for the separation of church and state. I think we need a separation of state and church. These are our children and not the government's. Academically, the state is failing. 70% of its graduates cannot pass the national standards math test, and less than 50% for English. In this state's legislation, I will propose a bill for the rights for students' parents. This bill of rights will include limiting children's exposure to public schools, and sexualization, and gender fluidity in elementary and middle schools, and that includes books like this. These things should not be part of our public education. They don't belong here. The school district would be better served to teach the academic basis that they have failed miserably at teaching so far. Elect Barry Knowles in 2022. I'm running for that legislative position. Thank you.
Just a little housekeeping, no clapping. Remember, we're on the honor system here, and as long as I'm sitting in this seat, we're gonna be respectful of every opinion. Doesn't mean we have to agree, but everybody's gonna get the same respect. And the next three up behind Ms. Brown is Donald Keats, Gail Helms, and Christina DeLeon. So if you'll come up to the wall. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Brown. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, board members and superintendent. I have two children in the Kent School District. They both go to Sawyer Woods, third grade and fourth grade, so they'll be going to Cedar Heights pretty soon. I'm also the daughter of a transgender individual, so I get it that, you know, the LGBT+ community needs to have literature in the classrooms, and there needs to be inclusion, but I don't think it needs to be with Jack of Hearts. The book is sexually explicit, and it's obscene. I can't read it aloud here from front to back. I'm not allowed to read from this book in this room. If I were to read from it, I'm sure that security would escort me out. In fact, in a public comment, I did quote from the book, and it was not allowed to be read here in this room because it was considered obscene. If the book is considered obscene and I can't read it out loud right now, right here, in this room, right now, then why is it in the classroom, in the library? It does not belong in the library. There are plenty of other LGBTQ+ books that we can put in the library. This one does not have to be in there. I ask the board to please have it removed from the library. Thank you.
No, no, no. No clapping.
Your order, ma'am. You will have the first three up for poets to clap. I want to show my support for what I agree with.
Sir, when I look at the number of things here, I'm trying to be fair to everybody. It's now 9:16. It's not that I'm favoring one or other. If I made a mistake and have offended you, I'm sorry, but we're not gonna have any more clapping. We're gonna keep going, and we're now on to Mr. Kelts.
Okay, my name is Dr. Donald Kelts. I am a DVM and a parent of a Kent Lake senior. First of all, I'd like to thank the Instructional Materials Committee for their previous work on this subject. Their vote of 12 to 3 to remove or keep the book out of the library and thus out of the schools was correct and in tune with at least my thoughts. Most parents, I think, want our students to receive rigorous teaching in all legitimate courses, including what we used to call the three Rs. Of course, that has expanded to much more. However, I think most would prefer to have schools stay out of most moral lessons and reserve those and values to the families. I have spoken before this committee or this board, and I have pointed out, we do all want to treat each other as we would like to be treated ourselves. Okay, "Parents have every right to ask that books featuring graphic sexual anatomies and behaviors, including sexual techniques, be kept out of curricula and school libraries. This book and others are available online." In my scientific opinion, having such books and films anywhere in schools appeals to the lowest standards of a moral society. I was a teacher of biology and the nature of reproduction in secondary education without resorting to graphic titillating words and imagery. Thanks again for the previously correct decision, and for you, board members and superintendent, hopefully, who agree.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Cristiana DeLeon. I'm actually a K-12 product of the Kent School District. I am a former Kent Schools employee, and just for the record, I'm speaking as an individual, but I'm also serving on the Black Diamond City Council, and I am very happy that we get this opportunity to partner with the four, which is wild, but four different school districts that serve our city. And I was just doing this in another district, too, that was being served, but we are having these same conversations in each school district because this is a culture war where our youth are the collateral damage in this fight. I was just in another school board where we were, or school board meeting, where we were talking about just the audacity that some students might want to have a GSA club after school, and now we're talking about books. And when is, this is the same thing that I was saying also in this other school district. I also did, in another district, get to teach a Holocaust unit. Now, we use that so much right now that I think we're starting to have it lose its meaning, but in the Holocaust, people burned books that talked about LGBT issues. And I can't look any of those students in the eye or think about my teaching career and think about the fact that we talked about how awful the Holocaust was, and yet here we are doing the very same thing that was exactly what was done. This is not hyperbole. This was reality, and it's now getting to be reality again. And our students are suffering for it. So I'm thinking especially of one of the last students I got to work with came out to me on the last day of school, and they were so scared to tell their family. I asked if they were going to any pride events. It was June. No, my family doesn't know. And they folded me this little paper origami and put it in like this little, like, paper clip box that was kind of transparent, and I just left it there to this day because we're not just talking about the books and the paper. We're also talking about those students who are trapped and are hiding, and they just want to be seen, and they want to be seen, and they want to be able to tell their stories on their terms. I don't get the right to tell their stories for them. I don't get to tell them how and when and where, if they're curious, they should learn more. Kids have plenty of opportunities to find anything, anywhere. They're choosing to go to literature because that speaks so much more than just simple facts. It's about ideas. It's about trying to explain the unexplainable, or things that we just didn't know was one question that led to another. This isn't what school districts do. This isn't what a democracy does. So on behalf of all of those youth in these areas who are hiding and they feel silenced, we as adults need to do better and model for them that it is safe for them to be who they are.
And just before we move on, we have three on deck over here, and that would be Christy Can you help me?
Last year? Last year? It says overflow.
Oh, we have all these in the overflow. I'm gonna spell it. The last name is C-H-I-D-E-S-T-E-R-V-O-T-I-S-E-X. Does that make any sense?
It's Chittister Vodasek, but thank you.
I'm so sorry. Please forgive me. And then on deck over on the wall is Lynette Sargent, and the last one on deck in person is Rachel Alexander. All right, proceed. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, school board. My name's Gail Helms, and I'm the grandmother of an 11-year-old. I also have three more children, all grown, all, some parts of Washington, some parts of other states, some of other countries with other cultures. In my case, my grandson is an IEP kid. He's been sexually molested, shot up with drugs, thrown in trunks, and then you guys want to bring a book into your library? He doesn't look like a special kid. He looks just like your kids. That library is not gonna know he had special circumstances. What if my grandson gets hold of that book? If you guys won't let it aloud be read here, what makes you think me as a grandmother wants this book on the library shelves? So I plead with you. You all got grandkids, I'm sure. Ask yourself, would you read this book to your grandchild that had issues, that had I am not gonna put my grandson through this. All of you guys got kids, I assume, right? Ask yourself, would you read this to an 11-year-old grandchild that you know has been sexually molested? Has been drugs? And this book, it's got teachers having sex with kids. Yeah, it has. I read it. Don't tell me. I just read it.
Keep calm, please.
So please, I'm asking you. Have you read it? Have you guys read it? You guys gotta all vote on it. Again, would you let your special-niece child have a copy of this in the library? Thanks.
Is this Christina now? Are we on track here? Christina?
Cristiana already went.
Oh, she already went? Oh, excuse me. I got a problem. All right. I'm sorry. I didn't flip my cards. Thank you. And just a warning, I know this is a passionate issue. Let's just, I know everybody feels on each side. Please, respect for all. That's all I'm asking tonight.
Thank you to the board and to the superintendent for allowing me to speak today. My name is Christy Chittister Vodasek. I am a community member here in Kent. I am a civilian federal employee, so I am a public servant. I work for all of you who pay federal taxes in this country, and most importantly, I'm a stepmother to a student at Kentwood High School who is a freshman this year. I should say I'm a proud stepmother. I wanted to come here today because few issues that I've encountered in my 41 years of life in this planet have affected me the same way as book banning. I think it is misguided and irresponsible to decide for everyone else's children what they can and cannot read. My stepdaughter is a frequent visitor to the school libraries. She went in elementary school, she went in middle school, and now she goes to the library at Kentwood very frequently. She is almost always carrying around books in her backpack from the school library. As a parent who is interacting with her on a daily basis, I make it my business to know what she's reading. I talk to her about the book she selected. I talk to her about the conversations she has with the librarians, who she adores, and I talk to her about morality and ethics because that is my job as a parent. I'm deeply disturbed by the conviction that some community member had, which I'm not even clear was apparent in this district, and the audacity that community member had to tell me or other parents here what our children should be allowed to access. I recognize the fact that the book may not be appropriate for all students in the middle school. However, it is not the responsibility of the librarian to provide books that are appropriate for the youngest student in the school. It is, and in my opinion, it is the role of a librarian to provide books that are appropriate topically and age-wise for all students in the school. Just as when I walk into the public library here in Kent, I see books that are for little children, middle-aged children, and adults. I do not ask the librarian at the public library to remove books for adults because my child will also be in there. I, as a parent, take responsibility for monitoring what my child reads. I personally believe that if I had a problem with a book that my child brought home from the school library, it is my responsibility to deal with that with my child personally. I talk to my stepdaughter about this issue because I have been very emotional about it. We have conversations over family dinner where we sit around the table and talk about our day. I asked her her thoughts on it. She told me, laughing, that if I were to think that, that she heard anything less than what the book discusses in a school hallway, she said it happens every day. She hears way worse from the other students in terms of the language, the sexual content of the discussions, and other items discussed. Please don't determine what every single child in this district should have access to because of a few unhappy community members. Thank you.
Thank you, President Hamada and the members of the board, and interim superintendent Vela, for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening.
And your name is?
My name is Lynette Sargent.
Thank you.
I have a recent graduate of the Kent School District, my child, who is a part of the LGBTQIA+ community, as am I. I recently had the opportunity to see the minutes of the instructional materi, instructional materials committee concerning the challenge of the book Jack of Hearts and Other Parts. And I have questions. The trans, the transcript states that the person who forwarded the challenge professed to be a mentor of students who also has a degree in helping people with sex addictions. According to the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders in the United States, which establishes the standards of health, mental health care for our country, sexual addiction is not a recognized condition at all. I have to tell you, as a member of the LGBTQIA+ community, I have heard and been, please excuse me, as a member of the LGBTQIA+ community, being accused of sex addiction is something that often is aimed at people within the community, like myself, singularly for being a part of the community, specifically being LGBTQIA+. My own recent graduate of the Kent School District has been accused of such, even though they are openly and proudly asexual. Accusations of sex addition is, accusations of sex addiction is often used to justify the use of conversion therapy on LGBTQIA+ people, and it is important to note that the use of conversion therapy on minors is against Washington state law. Back to the person who forwarded the complaint to the instructional, instructional materials committee. They profess to have a degree in helping people with sex addiction. They also profess to be somebody who mentors students. I would like to forward the fact that that, for me personally, in my experience, in the experience of my child, that is a red flag. And I would like to ask the Kent School District and the IMC Committee whether or not they took the time to vet and ascertain if the, if the challenge to this book was true and I, I'm shaking. False accusations against people like myself in the LGBTQIA+ community are rampant. They are throughout this country, and policies in school boards and state laws are being made because of them. And I have to ask you to consider the process that happened to determine that Jack of Hearts was not appropriate for these, for school libraries, considering those flaws and those actionable attacks against our community. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Vela. My name is Rachel Alexander, and I am a parent and PTA volunteer in the district. I am here to speak in the, the defense of the book Jack of Hearts. Before I do so, I would like to plead to the board that they disregard the findings of the IMC. As a rubric used to evaluate the challenge, book is designed specifically for curriculum and supplemental materials that are used in the classroom. School-wide library books do not fall under either of these categories, and while the district does not have an evaluation tool specific to library choice materials, it should not be using guidance that does not properly evaluate said materials. I understand that there's a lot of concern from some parents who don't wish their children to be exposed to more mature themes. However, limiting access to books with controversial topics won't prevent them from learning about these things, especially in a middle school setting, where these kinds of topics are regularly dealt with and heard in the hallways, often with inaccurate information. Furthermore, as library books are choice materials, if a student finds that a book is not for them, they can simply put it back on the shelf. Parents are the ones who have the responsibility to counsel the children on what they prefer they read and to get involved and discuss with their children what they're reading. They can also work with the school and the librarian to limit access if they so choose. Jack of Hearts may be a shocking read for some, but when taken as a whole, provides medically accurate information, healthy guidance on relationships, both in friendships and romantic partners. And it repeatedly and consistently encourages direct and explicit communication with partners. This is valuable and educational content, especially for our middle schoolers in the LGBTQ community. It has been alleged that this book is erotic, pornographic, sorry, graphic, and obscene, which by legal definition is inaccurate. The additional accusations that it promotes promiscuity, drug use, and has no educational value are also inaccurate. After reading the book in the entirety, it's clear that while the main character himself engages in sex, drug, and alcohol use, he promotes only safe behaviors and going at your own pace encourages everyone to go with their, sorry, encourages everyone to go at their own pace and to recognize that anyone pressuring you is not a friend or a good partner. While this book may not be for everyone, and in fact, may only resonate with a small set of middle schoolers, it is important that everyone have access to books that they can see themselves in, especially for an already marginalized community. What message are we sending these kids that only the LGBTQ books are called into question as being appropriate or not? I urge the board to overturn the IMC decision to ban Jack of Hearts and Other Parts at Cedar Heights Middle School Library or any other middle school library within the district. Thank you.
Ms. Currie, we're on to our online comments.
Thank you. Our first online comment is from Alicia Gray. To the school board regarding the banning of books. I don't want my children to grow up in Gilead. I don't want my children to live in 2049 where firefighters burned books. I don't want them to live under the eye of Big Brother. I'm not okay with them attending a district that is so unaware of the dangers of banning books that you don't get my references. Rebecca Marks. I'm writing in support of all books being allowed to be in all Kent School District schools. I'm outraged that KSD would even propose banning any book. KSD prides itself on its diversity and inclusion. They cannot talk about diversity, inclusion, celebrate pride, and then ban a book about a queer teenager. Both of those things cannot happen at the same time. I strongly urge KSD school board to vote against any type of ban. The Kent School District I have worked for the past eight years would never allow a book that celebrates the diversity of its student body be banned. Rommel Marquez. I really hope Jack of Hearts and Other Parts isn't banned. Why suppress the availability of LGBTQIA material at school when students can easily buy it online? A ban like this does not make sense, and putting a ban on this during Pride Month is not a good look for the district. Angela Sheera. Removing a book called Jack of Hearts and Other Parts is harming the LGBT community. Just because it makes you uncomfortable doesn't mean others have to suffer. Leave it on the shelf and let others read it. Everett Blindheim. Please do not ban any LGBTQ books from the library. Trans kids exist, regardless of whether closed-minded people want to accept it. Trans kids are already at a much higher risk of suicide, so it's incredibly important that we do everything we can to help them feel sage and accepted. It's 2022, and you're a school district discussing the idea of banning books. Read that last sentence again out loud, preferably in front of a mirror. Do the right thing. Marjorie Davis. The banning of books is not about the readers, but speaks volumes about the banners. This current attempt is a shameful waste of time and energy. Students who do not have access to public libraries due to lack of transport or other equity challenges depend on school libraries for information and entertainment. The students need options for context. In UDTs sing their world. Kimberly Mower. End the book ban. Adolescents need access to discover and learn in order to be accepting and understanding citizens. Joey Haban. Removing a book from a school library due to LGBTQ content sets a very dangerous precedent. Our schools should be safe places for everyone. There are many, many, middle-grade and young adult books about straight youth and their romantic adventures, yet these are allowed to stay on shelves because heterosexuality is viewed as the norm. In 2022, it is past time to acknowledge that many young people find themselves outside the norm and in need of support. There is a myth that discussing LGBTQ romantic relationships in elementary school is inappropriate. Meanwhile, plenty of straight kids have boyfriends and girlfriends in third grade or even earlier, and it's considered cute. LGBTQ youth deserve to have equal access to talk about themselves and to read about kids like themselves, every bit as much as straight youth do. Suicide is devastating LGBTQ youth, and one of the best ways to save these kids to show them that they belong in our world. That starts with showing them that they belong in our library. Thank you. Marivelle Espinoza. LGBTQ books need to stay in the library. Louise Path. I support the librarian's appeal of the decision of IMC to remove Jack of Hearts and Other Parts from the middle school library. Students need to have access to a variety of books that depict, depict a range of sexual orientations. It's odd that they felt the need to share that she views the list of books her adults, her adult 24-year-old child checks out from the public library. That doesn't change the fact that many students who most need access to non-cisgendered topics cannot access them via the public library due to parental disapproval. That disapproval does not remove students' needs for a non-cisgendered narrative and the mental health benefits that narrative confers. Please reconsider the banning of Jack of Hearts and Other Parts. Catherine Williams. Honorable board, please do not remove Jack of Hearts and Other Parts from Cedar Heights Middle School Library. Setting a precedent that a book that a non-impacted population finds offensive at the impact of a cohort of students desperately in search of representation and whom are being subjected to direct attack by national movements explicitly intended to erase them does not serve the greater good nor the mandate of the Kent School District to serve all students. A recent report by the Trevor Project shows that almost half of LGBTQIA+ students have contemplated suicide. Please put at-risk students first. Their existence matters. Thank you, Catherine Williams, Kent Area PTSA Educator of the Year 2022, City of Covington Human Services Commissioner. There's a web link. HTTPS slash slash WWW.NPR.org slash two oh two two slash oh five slash oh five, one oh nine six nine two oh six nine three slash LGBTQ dash youth dash thoughts dash of dash suicide dash Trevor drash project dash survey. Kristy Fazio. Banning LGBTQ books is cowardly, cruel, and sends the message that the school district does not support your queer and trans families. During this, I'm sorry, doing this during Pride Month is especially horrid, horrible. I urge you to consider that your actions align you with the absolute wrong side of history. Families like mine, with queer and trans kids and adults, deserve celebration, not being hidden. Sonia Griffin. KSD has made a commitment to protect marginalized student communities and has just agreed to remove at least one LGBTQI+ book from a shelf. This is against their anti-discrimination policy. Even if a book has sexual content, we are deluding ourselves if we think our kids don't have access to far less controlled sources of information. The message a book ban sends is twofold: that sexuality is bad and shameful, and that queer sexuality is bad and shameful. We harm children when we take away representation in books. We harm children when we teach them any parts of themselves are bad. We harm children when we ignore reality. KSD should not be in the business of harming children, especially marginalized populations with high suicide rates and pre-existing feelings of not being accepted. Let us decide what our kids read. Be better, save lives. Jeff Marks. I'm a proud spouse of a KSD educator. Please don't let a small minority of people who are uncomfortable with LGBTQ books make decisions that affect our kids. Our kids need LGBTQ books. LGBTQ kids need them to feel included and valued. Cisgendered kids need them to learn empathy and to learn that it's okay to be different. LGBTQ books literally can save lives in preventing youth suicide, which is real and pervasive problem amongst our LGBTQ kids as they try to find their place in this world. Your decisions have real impact. Don't kowtow to some vocal opposition. Their bigoted and anachronistic ideas have no place in Kent. Thank you for the work you do for the Kent community. Jennifer Askew. I implore the Kent School District Board to listen to the appeal of the librarian of Cedar Heights Middle School on the issue of removing the book Jack of Hearts and Other Parts from your library shelves. I've had the opportunity to read his letter and review the other materials provided. Banning this book is not in the best interest of the students in KSD and will set precedent for other districts in our state. You, the KSD board, are in the unique position of being able to take a stand against this book banning movement and set a standard for other boards to follow. Please make the choice that puts you on the right side of history. Thank you for your time. Elizabeth Standall. I'm a former educator from a family of Washington state educators, including a family member who teaches in the Kent School District. It is disgraceful that the LGBTQ plus positive books may be banned from school libraries. I urge the board to do the right thing and support LGBTQ plus youth. They are our students, family members, friends, and neighbors. Keep books in libraries which offer them representation. Do not banish them to the closet. Gina Boris. Please do not remove books from KSD libraries. It is critical that all students have access to books. The LGBTQ plus community is already marginalized, and the statistics of violence and suicide are outrageous. Students need to have access to materials that speak to them. It is truly a matter of life and death. Jasmine Clark. Banning books runs counter to the district's nondiscrimination policy and is harmful to students. The district's nondiscrimination policy plainly states that the district does not discriminate in any programs or activities on the basis of sex, race, creed, sexual orientation, gender expression, or identity. The fact that the only book in question that is being removed under the guise of protecting youth from sexual themes happens to be an LGBTQ plus themed book is a blatant discrimination and runs afoul of the district's own policy. Having a school that creates a safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environment is especially important for LGBTQ plus youth. The district has taken the initial steps of putting into words a nondiscrimination policy that says it will not discriminate, and it has even gone as far as gestures like annotating Pride Month on its calendar and noting that KSD is proud to celebrate and honor Pride Month. But this is simply insufficient and perhaps hypocritical in the face of this potential ban. Students deserve the respect of knowing their district actually intends to stand behind their statements so that they are more than empty words and gestures. LGBTQ plus youth are a particularly vulnerable population. A 2020 study published by the CDC found that suicide is the second-leading cause of death among young people ages 20, I'm sorry, 10 to 24, and that LGBTQ plus youth are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers. Research conducted by the Trevor Project has consistently found that LGBTQ plus youth report lower rates of attempting suicide when they have access to LGBTQ plus-affirming spaces, including schools. This is truly a life and death situation. Inclusive LGBTQ plus books allow students to understand sexuality and gender in a safer space. Denying access to that may force young people being required to read it. If the district is truly concerned, or I'm sorry, this is truly a life and death situation. Including LGBTQ books allows students to understand sexuality and gender in a safer space. Denying access to that may force younger people, queer or otherwise, to interact with incorrect or even toxic information. Finally, the literature in question is not a part of the curriculum, and no student is being required to read it. If the district is truly concerned about potential content in any of its library books, it can make parents aware and allow parents and young people autonomy in how to conduct their relationships around what is appropriate for reading. I urge- I urge the Board to reverse the decision to ban this book. Barbara Bryant. I remember in elementary, middle, and high school being assigned books where people were raped. There were books where people were beaten, abused emotionally, and tortured. Were there times I started a book and then put it down either because it made me uncomfortable or I didn't understand it? Absolutely. Were there times I went to my parents or teachers afterwards to talk about something I read? Many times. Do I think those books should be removed from the curriculum? No. Not all books are for all people. Many will stay with us long after we put them down because they had something important to say. I read a book my school librarian gave me in fourth grade about a female fighter pilot behind enemy lines who faced months of torture. To this day, I still think about this book and how uncomfortable it made me, but how it also stretched my horizons and made me want to work for a better world where this would not happen. Jack of Hearts is not about rape or torture. It doesn't even have to clear that bar. It is about consensual sex, safe sex, internet safety, and exploring ourselves. Do we really want to censor the very books that discuss safety in sexual relations? It is graphic because like it or not, our kids have easy access to these topics in a variety of places and often answered by someone who isn't taking the time to address it in an honest, open, and consensual way. The questions in the fictional blog come from real questions real teenagers have. Our teenagers are asking these questions too, even if we don't want to admit it. Censorship is a slippery slope. Let's trust our kids to know what they can read and our librarians and teachers to be there to support them. Thank you, Barbara Bryant, River Ridge Elementary Speech Language Pathologist. Carrie Whitney. It is a sad day when a school board in a district will go to task to ban a book that talks about sexuality, a normal part of teen life, before it will take a public stance on gun reform. What do you really think you're keeping kids safe from? Denial is about adults. These conversations about sex are happening on the internet and within teen communities. Having stories that reflect healthy engaging relationships that include sexuality is what I want my children to have access to, along with an accepting environment willing to give them the truth. Seeing issues, scenarios they see themselves or their friends reflected in is part of a healthy development and school duty to provide safe, accepting environments that give access and opportunity to these materials that include all its students' perspectives and stories. Melissa Williamson. In February this year, the principal of Cedar Heights Middle School removed Jack of Hearts and Other Parts by Lev A.C. Rosen. The book was the subject of a February ninth Kent School Board meeting, and while it is still available, the Kent School District's Instructional Materials Committee has voted in favor of the banning of Jack of Hearts. This is another attempt to target a marginalized population under the guise of protecting children. It is not an accident that the only books being questioned feature queer people and themes. Queer representation in literature is important and matters to our queer students. Please do not harm children by banning books. Linda Capes. Instead of banning books which will not turn your children gay, how about reading them first and then engaging conversations with students about what these books are about, how it makes them feel or think? Banning books is the first line of defense for those with small minds and scared of change, but believe it or not, change is coming. People who are different from you are tired of having to live in the shadows, pretending they don't exist. Everyone has a right to be who they are, to be loved for who they are, to live side by side with others. By banning books that make you uncomfortable, you're sending a message that our country is no different than countries that prevent girls from getting an education or working or even driving. These knee-jerk reactions to all things that are different from when you grew up is because of prejudice and bias, and Washington State is better than that. You can be better than that. Meet with LGBTQIA+ community leaders. Talk with them. Learn about LGBTQIA+ people and about Muslim people and deaf people and blind people and all the other wonderful, beautiful people out there that makes our lives richer because they're in it. Hate should, hate should be in our school. Neither small-minded reactions to things that are different from your vision of what's normal. Rob McWolf. I am writing to express my appalled disbelief that the homophobic and transphobic censorship at middle school library has not been rectified. In the middle of a gravely concerning upswing in frankly genocidal rhetoric against LGBTQ people from bigoted right-wing hate groups across the nation, and during Pride Month, I would hope as a gay man that the city I live in would be capable of doing the right thing and sending the message that yes, it is safe for my family in this community, and yes, my rights and the rights of all LGBTQ people will in fact be respected. Tommy Johnson. Even the consideration of banning LGBTQ books by the Kent School District demonstrates lack of empathy and archaic exclusionary thinking. This practice will further alienate children and families who are LGBTQ. This lack of support as a school district can be a life-or-death situation for a child as it puts forward shame to a population already four times more likely to commit suicide. We, as a school district and community, should teach love, support of our children and families, and acceptance of diversity. Here is the Trevor Project. HTTPS slash slash WWW.TheTrevorProject.org slash resources slash article slash facts dash about dash LGBTQ dash youth dash suicide slash. Paul Ruggo. I am expressing my displeasure and disapproval of banning Jack of Hearts, a novel with LGBTQ characters. Removal of this book in light of books with similar themes is grossly inappropriate and a disservice to those identifying as LGBTQ and for those looking to gain insight. Ashwini Vaitya. I am disappointed that Cedar Heights Middle School is deciding to ban some books which constitute part of some of the best support systems for our LGBTQ children. I urge you not to allow this ban. I am a mother of two adult kids, one of who identifies as LGBTQ since he was barely eight years old. My son went through an inordinate amount of anxiety, frustration, and anger. I did not for a second think he was struggling with his sexuality. Both my husband and I were extremely ignorant about this subject. A few, few years later, my son told me that during these tumultuous time in his life, the books depicting LGBTQ issues and characters which he got from his school library helped him the most to cope. Those books helped him to realize that he was not alone. He tells me reading books gave him a lot of clarity about his situation and helped to swash the pain he felt earlier. As a mother, I realized at that time how powerful these books are for those otherwise lonely kids. Because they are terrified to talk about themselves to anybody else, including friends, their biggest allies are these books, which provide them with an affirmation of their own emotions. More importantly, they see characters like themselves in these books, and they know they are not alone in their struggle, that they are not freaks, and that there are other youngsters like them who are going through the same struggle. Books similar to Jack of Hearts and others might have saved my son's life. I would also like to assure you that no way do these books influence kids who are not LGBTQ. On the contrary, they help non-LGBTQ kids to normalize the existence of LGBTQ kids and to reduce the stigma and stereotypes surrounding LGBTQ people, contributing toward a more thoughtful and compassionate approach to other aspects of their lives. It really is a situation in which all the kids do better, making a lot more productive community. This exactly has been my experience with my second child who is not LGBTQ. I urge you to do everything within your power to ensure that the LGBTQ students in your school feel protected, supported, and accepted. Please do not support the ban of any of the books depicting LGBTQ struggles and issues. I look forward to receiving strong support from you and your school administration for our children. Tyler Walker. I think it is ridiculous that we are discussing banning queer-themed books in this district in 2022. I find that these morals and ethics are applied inequitably, given that many of the concerns about these LGBTQ books, sex, gender identity, assault, et cetera, can be found in many of Shakespeare's works as well. We don't seem to have an issue with books like The Bell Jar, Romeo and Juliet, and A Clockwork Orange, but as soon as LGBT people are introduced, it became an issue. Marla Taylor. Good evening Superintendent Vella and Board members. As an educator in Kent and a member of the LGBTQI+ community, I am disappointed that there is even discussion about banning a book. I did take it upon myself to read the book to make sure I was fully aware of what content of the book was. I see no reason that this book should be banned from a library where it is a choice for students to check out books. It is not part of the curriculum. I know from personal experience, both as a child who knew they were part of the community as early as fourth grade and an educator in the elementary schools, that one of the best ways for students to find representation of who they are or who they think they might be or even are curious and want answers about their pears is in books. Why would we take that resource away from them? According to a study conducted by GLSEN in 2019, when students are not getting what they need in the classrooms, libraries become an even more important resource. Yet just under half of students, forty-eight point nine percent, reported that they could find information about LGBTQ-related issues in their school library. If only half the students can find representation in their current libraries, why are we considered taking more away? A book is one of the safest ways for a child to explore so many ideas. The thought of banning books feels like we are stepping backwards in history in a time where social and emotional learning and health is so important to our students. Shouldn't we be making sure that all children are represented in the library? Please reconsider the banning of this book. It is only going to hurt children out there that are already at risk. Sincerely, Marla Taylor, NBCT, Physical Education Specialist, Martin Sartone Elementary School. Deb Darling. My name is Deb Darling and I'm the Board President of the Seattle Chapter of PFLAG. PFLAG is the nation's oldest and largest organization that supports LGBTQ plus people and their parents, families, and allies. One of the pillars of PFLAG's mission is education. We strive to educate ourselves and others about the unique issues and challenges facing people who are LGBTQ plus. Educating our kids begins at home, but school libraries enable students to discover books that will expand their world and fill their hearts and minds with ideas, characters, and experiences new to them. Kids who identify as LGBTQ plus may not be able to find those books elsewhere, or they might be afraid to look for them because they are not out at home. We want kids to be able to see themselves in the books they need. Let's give kids some credit. In fact, let's empower kids to do more critical thinking and to ask questions that help them make decisions for themselves. We at PFLAG believe we need to include more books about all kinds of topics and people in our schools and libraries. That's why we ask that you keep Jack of Hearts and Other Parts with LGBTQ plus themes on the shelves at Cedar Heights Middle School. Emma Karani. LGBTQ students deserve to see themselves represented without being told that their existence is dirty, obscene, or unfit for school. The Trevor Project found that LGBTQ students who were in an unwelcoming school environment were twice as likely to commit suicide. This is not simply about a book, but about life and death for some teens. We deserve to learn about ourselves just like anybody else does. The safe haven provided by books can let LGBTQ kids know that they have a place. By banning these books, you are taking away that place. You are taking away representation that can change or save lives. That concludes the online public comments for this topic.
Thank you very much, Ms. Karen. All right, we're on to eight point oh one. The Kent School District Board of Directors will now consider an appeal from a decision by the Instructional Materials Committee, also known as the IMC. The Board's actions tonight is limited to either adopting or rejecting the IMC's decision to remove the book Jack of Hearts and Other Parts. In the collection of library books at Cedar Heights Middle School Library, other issues such as personnel matters or employment grievances are not before the Board tonight. And the material that is relevant to those issues should not have any bearing on our decision-making. Today's date is June eighth, 2022, and the time is now ten oh two PM. The Board will hear and decide this appeal in a public hearing pursuant to Board Policy 2020 and Procedure 2020P. The appellant in this matter is Mr. Gavin Downing. The individual who submitted the citizen challenge is Karina Alsop. Pursuant to Procedure 2020P, the Board is to review this matter and make our decision in a public hearing. This will be done by a motion to the Board. We will then send a written notice of decisions to the parties. The Board's decision will be the final district decision regarding this challenge and may be appealed to the Superior Court under RCW twenty-eight A dot six four five. Notice of this appeal right will be included in the Board's written notice of decision. The Board has received copies of the following documents, which were reviewed by the IMC or prepared as part of its decision-making process. They were all posted under our Board Docs for the entire community to look at. They included Citizen's Challenge of a Book submitted by Karina Alsop, Staff Response to Challenged Instructional Material by Gavin Downing, Book Challenge Rubric: Findings by Principal Erica Hansen, Principal's Decision, Outside Reviews and Resources, IMC Book Challenge Appeal Criteria Decision, All-Set Three-Minute Remarks at School Meeting, All-Set Five-Minutes Remarks at the IMC Meeting, Requests for Appeal to the Instructional Materials Committee, Emails from Corbly to IMC Members, Emails from Corbly to Challenger, Materials Submitted by the Appellant to IMC, IMC Meeting Presentation, IMC Meetings. The Board has also received copies of the following materials as part of this appeal. Appeal of the IMC Decision transmitted and Attachments four nine, four twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two. Email from the Appellant dated five seven twenty-two. Email from the Appellant dated five fifteen twenty-two. Ray, Additional Information. Email from Appellant dated five twenty-seven twenty-two. Email from Appellant dated six four twenty-two. Washington State Library Position Statement. ACLU dash Washington Letter to Kent School District Board of Directors. Copies of these documents have been provided to the Board and involved parties in advance of this hearing. The Board members also have read this book, the subject of this appeal. We will start with an opportunity for the appellant to present argument as to why the Board should reject the IMC decision. The appellant will have up to ten minutes for his presentation. The Board will then afford the opportunity of a response from the challenger, Ms. Alsop, who also will have up to ten minutes for her presentation. Should he choose to do so, we will now hear argument from the appellant as to why the Board should adopt or reject the IMC's decision. Please limit your presentation to ten minutes, and I'm welcoming Mr. Gavin Downing to the microphone.
Superintendent Vella, President Hamada, members of the Board, thank you. It does not escape my notice that as the nation reels from students being murdered in classrooms yet again, this is where our focus seems to be. Banning books with LGBTQ content, and during Pride Month, no less. This profoundly saddens me. I would think we would have more important places to put our focus. But as long as we're here, I will do my job and defend this book vigorously to show our marginalized students that there are people out there who care about them. I am certain that during open comments this evening, there will be people quite upset with the content of the book Jack of Hearts. They may well read out graphic sections of the book specifically selected out of context and edited to upset people. Many parents may wish for their students to not read this book, and that is their role as the parent to make that decision, and that is between the parent and the student. They have every right to determine this book is not the right book for their student. What they do not have is the right to determine if this book is not acceptable for any student. You will also hear from parents who want their students to have access to this book. One parent should not trump the rights of others, and no parent should trump the First Amendment rights of any student. This whole process has been highly irregular from the beginning, as I noted in my appeal statement. Treating the book as though it's instructional material or curriculum ignores the unique role of the school library, affirmed by the Supreme Court in the landmark Ford versus Pico case, which I cited multiple times across my defense of this book, which is why 2021 does need to be updated as discussed at last board, uh, last week's board meeting, as I've been saying all along. Being a librarian at the middle school is challenging and not for the faint of heart. We have readers who are struggling desperately with basic reading skills. We have readers who are reading at the college level or beyond. We have student patrons who are emotionally mature and those who are not. We have patrons who are not even thinking about sex, and yes, we have patrons who are already engaging in sexual activity. Every single patron deserves a library that serves them and their informational needs without judgment. I do not serve the average middle school student. There's no such thing. I serve every single student individually. Is this book for all students? No, of course not. It's why it's a library book and not curriculum. If a student doesn't want to check it out, it can remain on the shelf. The library isn't supposed to be a clean, sanitary place where only pre-approved ideas are presented. It is a place where a multitude of perspectives can be found, and especially in middle school where students are figuring out their identities and self, sense of self. We must provide perspectives outside the sanitized, safe ideas of what one's life may end up looking like. We are, as the Supreme Court once noted, a realm of voluntary inquiry. This book could save lives. It will save lives if the board makes the right decision tonight. To remove it not only attacks students' First Amendment rights, it will endanger students' lives, and it sends a message to our LGBTQ students that the district believes there's something wrong with them. They must conform to the board's idea of what an LGBTQ person looks like to be valid. And that would break my heart. There are so many ways to be LGBTQ, and this book celebrates that diversity. The challenger claimed this book could do harm, but has not provided any relevant data to back up this claim. Some people called it pornographic or sexually explicit, but legally, it's neither, and calling it that does not make it into something it's not. This book is a young adult novel. We have many, many young adult novels in the library. Some have suggested that because the suggested reader level is fourteen plus, it should only be at the high school. If we only select books that are appropriate for thirteen years of age, keeping in mind we have a number of fourteen-year-old students at the middle school, we will do a significant disservice to our students. Should we remove Bronte or Bradbury, Cagor or Orwell because they have a higher reading level? Shouldn't we challenge our students? Shouldn't we believe in them? Shouldn't we trust them to find the right book for themselves? Everywhere, but especially in a district as diverse as Kent, we need diverse books. We need books that challenge our ways of thinking. We need books that provide a multitude of perspectives. We need books that give a voice to all our students, even those who some administrators may believe are unacceptable. I have dismantled every argument made against the book, and what is left seems, seems to be simply, as one member of the IMC noted, as a straight white male, it made me uncomfortable. That discomfort is not a reason to remove this book. Please look at all of the arguments, see the facts and the data that I have provided, and then do the right thing. Let this book remain on the shelves where it belongs. Thank you.
All right, we're now on to the citizen challenger could present an argument for upholding the IMC decision. Ms. Alsop.
Good late evening, members of the school board. I want to thank you for your time and your dedication to the well-being of the Kent School District. I am always full of gratitude and appreciation when I see members of our school board at our schools and in our classrooms and for showing up to meeting after meeting after meeting, even when it seems like the only product of your work is dissatisfaction. It takes courage and tenacity to accept a position where you know you will never be able to make all parties happy. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you do. I appreciate all of you. As the parent formally challenging this book, I had the opportunity to receive and review the documents being provided to you earlier than most community members. Even with this extra time, I found it nearly impossible to carefully read through all of the documents while maintaining an overloaded work schedule as educators are facing, especially this year, while attempting to somehow balance family obligations. It is my hope that you were able to read through my previous statements when I first met at the school level with Mr. Downing and Mrs. Hanson, then my second statement when Mr. Downing appealed the decision of Mrs. Hanson to the Instructional Materials Committee. The perspectives that I shared in those two statements are not unique to me, and my being here tonight is in representation of students and parents alike who believe the sexually explicit material found in Jack of Hearts and Other Parts to be inappropriate for the middle school audience. I hope you do not mind me reiterating some of the key points in case you were unable to get through all of the materials sent for your review. First and foremost, I want to be one hundred percent clear that the concerns that I have about the book Jack of Hearts and Other Parts has absolutely nothing to do with the fact that the main character of the book identifies as being gay. I have stated over and over again in my many responses, and I feel it is important and necessary to have books with the LGBTQ plus characters and themes in them for the benefit of our LGBTQ plus students. It is my love of the LGBTQ plus community and all children that I feel that this book, Jack of Hearts and Other Parts, is inappropriate for the middle school audience, especially the LGBTQ plus audience. The input that I have received from loved ones, family members, community members, who are a part of the LGBTQ plus community is that this book does not portray their community in a way that they want to be recognized for. Their concerns are this book over-sexualizes their community, glorifies risky sexual behavior that outweighs any benefit of the book having a main character that identifies as gay. The sexual behaviors in this book are risky. These include threesomes, using drugs while having sex, meeting strangers in motel rooms for sex. All put our children at a higher risk for things like human trafficking, depression, and even suicide. We want to choose books that saves lives absolutely, not put them at a higher risk for harm. Jack of Hearts and Other Parts does not ease you into the mature content of the book that is inappropriate for middle school-aged children. The sexually explicit and other inappropriate themes start in the second paragraph of the first chapter of this book, with the main character glorifying the underage use of drugs inside the school restroom on a daily basis. In the third paragraph, we are introduced to the first threesome. In the second chapter of the book, the main character celebrates statutory rape by bragging about his ability to pass as being barely legal. I am not referring to the descriptive rumor of Jack having sex with the coach. One of the main components throughout this novel is the advice column the main character has talked into writing by another student who started the blog after being kicked off the school newspaper for aggressive behaviors. In the dialogue, there is a discussion on what the content of the columns should be, to which the topic of sex advice is encouraged. Erotic is fine. Kirkus Reviews gives a positive review and describes the book as a racy mystery cum sex manual and recommends the book for individuals fifteen and older. The School Library Journal suggests that the minimum grade be tenth grade. The publisher does list the minimum recommendation age of fourteen. However, the first school year where nearly all students are fourteen years old is in high school. It is not to the benefit of our students to introduce them to such sexually explicit content before their brains are mature enough to process it. In an attempt, in an attempt to better understand the demographics of the Cedar Heights population, I made a request on the number of students and their ages. At the time of my recent request, only twenty-five percent of the students met the minimum age, which is not an automatic qualifier that they are now emotionally ready to read the content of this book, especially when so many other organizations suggest the minimum age of the middle, of the book be higher than that of the publisher. It is important to keep in mind that the average age of middle school's population will only be getting younger as the district plans to move sixth graders into middle school in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, meaning there will be students as young as ten years old attending Cedar Heights. We're talking about content maturity, not reading level difficulty. In the Position Statement of Intellectual Freedom in Washington State School Libraries dated June second, twenty twenty-two that Mr. Downing shared, the Washington Library Association stated their position on censorship. I appreciated this statement for many reasons. First, I appreciate them using the word censorship instead of banning a book. I believe this to be an important clarification for this particular challenge, and I am glad that they are cognizant of that differentiation. In this statement, they state students and parents have a right to determine which books are or are not appropriate for their child. They do not have that right to make that determination for all students. I agree with this statement one hundred percent. At the risk of stating the obvious, parents are not allowed in the Cedar Heights library. Mr. Downing makes it very clear to the students at Cedar Heights Middle School that parents are absolutely not allowed to be a part of the library by telling them that even if a parent were to ask him directly what books their own child has checked out, he will not tell them. I volunteer in the community, I live in the Kent School District, and get the opportunity to interact from children from Cedar Heights on a regular basis, including children who attend Cedar Heights that identify with the LGBTQ plus community. Months before I became aware of a student being incredibly uncomfortable at school because of the content of Jack of Hearts and Other Parts, I had multiple children who attend Cedar Heights tell me how odd and uncomfortable that emphasis the librarian put on students at the beginning of the school year that what they did in the library was private and did not need to worry about their parents finding out what they are reading. By leaving this book in the middle school library, you are removing a parent's right to say that this book is not appropriate and are in fact determining it is appropriate for all students, since no restrictions apply for any student to check out this book. This is contrary to the stance that the Washington Library Association provided to Mr. Downing, and it is a huge reason why it is inappropriate to leave this book in the middle school library. The right of a parent to choose that this book is appropriate for their child is preserved and available to those parents at no charge through the King County Library System. A parent does not even need to physically go to the library to pick up a book, as it is available digitally, and all middle schoolers... Sorry.
Someone needs to be on mute.
It's a longer...
Yes. Can we pause the time?
Keep going.
That this book is appropriate for their child is preserved and available to those parents at no charge through the King County Library System. A parent does not even need to physically go to a library to pick up the book, as it is available digitally, and all middle schoolers are provided a Kent School District laptop, instructions, and a partnership with the King County Library System that makes checking out a book easy, equitable, and allows parents to be a part of the process when considering a book with such mature content. I know this decision is one that none of us are taking lightly and how impossible it is knowing that either way there are going to be those that disagree with you. However, I truly believe that in providing all parents their right to choose whether or not a book filled with sexually explicit material, it is necessary to remove it from the middle school library, since leaving it there removes that right and choice. I am so grateful for Ms. T's comments about following policy and procedure. When I first learned about the policy and procedure about adding new books to the library, that in doing so, an approval needed to be given by the administrator. Mr. Downing said in a news interview that he knew before purchasing Jack of Hearts and Other Parts that it would cause a controversy because of the content and concerns about the book in other states. I made a public records request asking for this approval and evidence that the policy was indeed followed to add the book. The response that I got from the district was that no such record could be located. I encourage you to honor all parents' rights to be able to be a part of the decision of whether or not a book is appropriate for their children by removing it from a library that we are not allowed to be a part of. Thank you.
As you've noticed tonight, we've allowed as much flexibility as humanly possible. If things have gone not perfectly, we're doing our best to get through this and personally be fair to every side and respectful. And so, now we are on to eight point oh one, Appeal of Decision by Instructional Material Committee. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we reject the decision by the Instructional Materials Committee.
I second.
Discussion.
I mean, I can start. I was really concerned. I, I thought that the process was to focus on the IMC decision. And so, what I heard from Gavin was information about the IMC and why that was being challenged. I'm uncomfortable with the fact that Ms. Oslet was bringing in, we were told not to bring in people, we were told not to talk about workplace, et cetera, and that was brought up a lot. I feel like the comments related to focusing on the IMC decision were not the focus. And that concerns me because it feels to me like the, that, that comment, or that, um, those remarks were focused on the person and not necessarily the process, which is what we're supposed to be discussing here today is the process. And so, that's, that's a concern for me. Also, as I'm looking at some of the information, it was brought up at our last meeting, that Policy 2021 has not been updated and that while we're in the middle of this process, we could not modify the language of that policy. And so, what happens then is we're using the 2020 policy, which is focusing specifically on instructional materials and supplemental materials, which happened to have a word in there about library materials and which made it go through this process. All the materials that we saw were related to instructional materials, which the library book is not. That's a separate policy. So, for me, using a rubric and other information to judge a book that was based, or using a form that was used to judge curriculum and materials is not appropriate in this process as we're talking about library materials. We need to update our policies so that we have proper procedures in place to focus on library materials and not jumble library materials into instructional materials. So, based on what I read and the materials that I saw from the instructional mater, uh, the IMC, like the, I don't feel like that decision met the qualifications for us to look at the importance of library materials. So, for me, I think we need to reject this decision. We need to update our policies and procedures, and that was brought up. And, um, I think we need to reject this. I think I'm also, am never going to support banning, censoring, or removing books ever. And so, I think that it's a dangerous thing to start with, and I think we need to reject that process that happened, and I think we need to update our policies. So, that's where I'm at.
Other discussion.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you that were respectful of each other dealing with opposing opinions is it's critical that we realize that people carry different standards within them and that they are very real. There was real passion expressed. And more importantly, of course, ultimately, it is about the students. We are here as a public agency to basically try and meet the needs of educating the students of this community. And we have a variety of tools that we're supposed to use to support classroom teachers and the overall process. But it's not a perfect system, and I don't know that we're all going to be satisfied when this is over. First of all, I do want to make one backdrop to this. The IMC is a requirement under state law.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I, was that a Wally? I can hear you.
Yeah, that's me again. Can you hear me? Okay. But how come, how come I'm having a hard time hearing you?
Well, I'll leave that to the person in charge of that aspect. In any case, the, the other thing that did show up in this conversation is a recognition that there isn't a standard kit that realistically... that realistically LGBTQ students not only exist, but they need to be supported. But the question before us tonight is whether this particular book is appropriate for this particular age group. The bottom line here is the process that was employed had a large committee of people that specifically review curriculum, and the very heart of curriculum review is, is it appropriate for the students that you're making that selection? So that's, you didn't get a unanimous decision on that in this particular case, and you're not going to get a unanimous decision from this board either. So what it translates is, we have to find a way to get through this process and learn how we have to keep going forward because it's not a simple question, and it's very valid that parents should be concerned. Now, that being said, Gavin, I do fully recognize that you were trying to do a service for the kids within your building. And that, and it's challenging. No argument on that. But the question becomes when a large group of professional educators have arrived at a decision. I'm going to respect that judgment, and I will vote to oppose this motion.
We have an ongoing situation, and believe me, we did not plan this. We are going to have to unfortunately have a recess. Our other director, Director Farah, has not been able to hear very well, and he definitely has an opinion on this. And I'm going to apologize. We're working very hard to get connected to Director Farah from afar. So I don't know how long we're going to go, but about a five minutes? We'll try five minutes and hopefully getting back online, and I'm very sorry. Very sorry. Oh, boy. What else can happen, huh? It's 10:30.
Five minutes. I might do that, too.
We're going to try to go by phone because we can't.
Okay. Good to know.
Did you turn the power off in Hawaii after 8 o'clock?
After you're on a long time, less than trouble happens, yeah. Thank you.
Do you think he actually heard the testimony?
I don't know. I don't know what he heard.
Got it.
What if he doesn't hear?
Repeat the motion or report. Repeat what they-
Wally, can you hear this sound?
I can't hear you. I hear a background noise.
Okay. One second, Wally, okay? Director Farah, can you hear me?
Consent agenda, everything?
Wally, do you hear me?
Makes sense.
Director Farah, can you hear us? Wally? Wally, are you there? I can hear you. Were you trying to speak to the laptop?
Okay. Just let him know.
...
Director Farah, first I have a couple questions. Were you able to hear the motion that was made?
No, I was not able to hear anything at all.
Okay. Would you like to repeat your motion, Joe, and the second?
Yes, my motion was to reject the decision made by the IMC.
I second.
And then we had discussion, Director Farah. Do you want to summarize your discussion? I'll start with Director, or Vice President Benno, and then go to Director Clark, who have already had their discussion, and then I'll go directly to you. So prepare your discussion, Director Farah, please. Go ahead, Vice President.
I mean, I'm not going to be as eloquent as I was before, but I, the focus, there's a couple of things I talked about. The focus of this appeal was supposed to be on the IMC decision. And I had a concern that Ms. Oslit was, I don't want to say slanderizing because that feels like a legal term, but was focusing more of the attention on Gavin than on the process. And I don't feel like that is okay. But that was my first comment. My other comment had to do with the process of the IMC didn't use materials for library because the focus of the Policy 2020 is on instructional materials, which we had just revised to remove the library portion because there is a separate policy on library, which is 2021, that we can't work on while in the middle of this process. And so the forms, the rubrics, and everything that was used to evaluate this book was based on as if it were an instructional material or supplemental material, not library materials. And besides the fact that I don't ever believe in banning, removing, or censoring books of any kind, I think that was kind of my summary.
Director Clark.
So all parties were basically in agreement that the recognition of LGBTQ students are important to basically recognize and support. But the fact is that the IMC, which is required by law, does in fact involve a large group of people who are professionals that basically are in the process of what they are doing, looking at the maturity of the students and the appropriateness of the materials that are before them and the educational process. So from that standpoint, while I recognize that trying to find books for LGBTQ students is a challenge, the question before us is specifically this particular book and the committee's judgment of that, and I will vote to support the IMC committee.
I forgot to make a point, too, is that there was some people missing from the Instructional Materials Committee when that decision was made. There was several KEA members. The IMC was largely made up of district staff and administrators, and educators were left out. We added them in later, but by then, they weren't onboarded by the time the IMC was able to read the book and to onboard them and to make decisions. So there were several key players missing from that. That would be my other, there goes. Director Farah, I think.
All right, we're going to go to Director Farah, out of fairness if we haven't lost him.
Director Farah, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Hey, I couldn't make what, Director Benno and whoever was talking after him were saying.
Mr. Brock Vogel, so guidance on options for us to move on. He was not able to hear the discussion from Vice President Benno or Director Clark.
Can you hear him now?
Can you hear?
Director Farah, are you here?
Can you hear me, guys? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I'm surprised that when Director Benno was talking, it was coming through like, you know, cracking, cracking, and then he finished at someone else's book, and I couldn't make anything out of the second person, whoever that was.
It was Director Clark. One second.
Yes, just talking to the phone.
Yeah.
All right, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, all right. The short version is, I'm supporting the IMC decision. How about that? Do you understand?
No, I understand.
Okay, so it's one to one, and you're up.
We're not voting. You're not voting. We're not voting. It's not a vote.
Excuse me, it's not a vote, but we did explain our rationales for where we are.
All right, hold on.
Can we get some discussion from Director Farah?
Discussion from you, Director Farah.
Can you guys hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay.
Did I speak too soon?
Director Farah?
Yeah, I'm still, okay. I'm still hearing.
You're up for discussion.
I am up hook. I don't even know what to say. I'm lost for words because I'm just going through. Oh, I can't believe, I don't know what to say. I really don't. I'm all flustered.
Director Farah, do you have prepared remarks for your position on this, this uphold-
What is that?
Director Farah, can you hear me?
Yes.
I want you to make your remarks if you have a position on the motion that's on the floor.
I have to abstain from this. I have not heard anyone speak.
All right. Okay, well, we're not to the vote, so you don't wish to contribute to the discussion?
Yeah, no.
Okay, all right. Director Farah is not going to, if you did not hear that, partake in the discussion. And so we're on to Director Benno.
I am extremely uncomfortable without five board directors voting on this matter. This is, I will read my prepared statements, but I just, I just think it's wrong to vote on something this important when Director Farah was involved in the earlier part of the meeting and that's how I feel about that. I echo what Vice President Benno said. And honestly, that's not my dog. Honestly, I-
The table, this discussion to another meeting.
I make a motion that we move this discussion to another meeting when all five members can be present.
We have a motion on the floor, though. Can we table that, Paul?
You can make a motion. I'm sorry.
Help me with the order that this needs to be in.
I think the motion to table from Director Bettinger is well taken, despite the fact that it's in the middle of this motion under the circumstances. So it would suspend discussion of this motion and table it to a time certain that the board identifies.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And do we vote on this, too, then, Paul? All right.
My concern for discussion is that if Director Farah abstains, then, you know, there's... Without having had him... He can read the public comments. He can watch the video later. But without five members voting, it has potential to be a two-two, and then it wouldn't pass. And then it has... And I mean, it still has a potential to be a three-two or a four-one. There's always that potential, but it just makes me really uncomfortable to not have all members present.
All right, well, let's call for the motion. And Director Farah is going to be able to vote on this, right? He can hear us to vote? Emilio?
Who's speaking? I can't hear.
It's Leslie, and she's asking right now for guidance on whether you can vote on this motion. And Paul's coming forward.
I want to... If it's called for a vote right now, I have to abstain the vote right now.
No, wrong vote. We've got another motion on the floor to table to the next meeting.
Oh, so you... Okay, so next, for our next meeting.
Our designated time, yeah.
Right, so he can participate.
What are you saying, Kim?
I'm letting Paul make a statement about whether we can do this.
Right. I think what's on the floor now is a motion to table the present motion on the vote, substantive vote. There's a second, and the question was whether Awali can vote on that. He can vote if he can hear, and he is aware of the circumstances.
All right, did you hear that motion?
No, I didn't hear. Can you speak that one more time, please?
Okay, so Paul has explained there has been a motion to table with a second. You are allowed to vote, and this would push the actual vote to the next meeting.
Yes, I will vote for that.
All right. I'm going to call for the motion. All those in favor of tabling the discussion tonight and results of that at another designated time, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye. And Director Farah said aye.
Okay, the motion carries. So we're... I guess we're on to 8.02. And I do apologize for our instructional... All right.
Point of privilege, I just want to understand that we could... Director Farah can watch the video, and that the next meeting, it will merely pick up where we left off? And it won't be a... It will just be picking up basically where we left off, yes?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so then that means that there will no longer be no more discussion and no more public comment. That's already been satisfied. There will just be a vote.
Yes, yes. All right, we're on to 8.02. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, if I can, I'm going to...
Please be quiet if you're leaving. We're conducting a meeting.
Madam Chair, I'm going to actually move to approve 802, 803, 804, and 805, as these are all about contracts. They've already been vetted by administration, and it's just a question of going forward with the work.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we combine 802 through 805 on our discussion and approval. Discussion.
Like I said, it's already... This has already been vetted by administration. We're just moving forward.
Okay. I'll move to the motion. All those in favor of combining 802, 803, 804 for a vote, signify their approval.
And 805.
805, I thought I said 805. 805. Signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. Abstentions. And Director Farah, did he vote?
I don't think he can hear.
I...
He can't hear.
I don't have the phone.
Okay, the motion carries. All right, we're on to 8.06.
I make a motion we approve 8.06, 8.07, and 8.08 at the same time, because they're all about the Gear Up Field Trip.
Second.
Discussion.
Same thing, these have already been vetted, so we're safe.
All right, I'll call for the motion. All those in favor of combining 806 through 808, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by raising their right hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move 809, 10, and 11. These are all instructional material, textbooks, adoptions.
Second. Someone want to second it?
I second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept... There's a motion on the floor to combine 809, 810, 811 for approval. Discussion.
I only... I just have one question is, which Instructional Materials Committee looked at this? Is it the new, bigger committee or the old committee?
I believe it's the current.
The current, the one we voted on recently?
With the new members?
Okay.
Any other further discussion?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, President Hamada, Vice President Benno, members of the board, Interim Superintendent Vela, and Ms. Curry. I'm going to ask Dr. Corvilly to come up and address that question specifically.
President Hamada, directors, Board of Directors, Superintendent Vela, and Ms. Curry. Yes, it was the most recent committee that looked at these materials.
Further discussion? Seeing none? All right, I'm going to call for a motion on the combination of approval on 8.09, 810, 811. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. We're on to 8.12.
I move approval of outdoor school Washington grant application, 8.12.
I second.
Discussion.
Obviously, it's an approval of a grant, and clearly, that's... This is an ongoing thing that we have done for ages, so very appropriate.
Yeah, Camp Waskowitz, right?
Further discussion? Seeing none, I'm calling for a vote on 8.12, outdoor school Washington grant application. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. We're on to 8.13.
I move 8.13, Transition Plan for Comprehensive School Counseling Plan.
Mrs. Haggen?
Discussion. Seeing none, I'm calling for the vote on 8.13, Transition Plan for Comprehensive School Counseling Plan. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. We're on to 8.14, Waiver of COVID Era Student Fines and Fees. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve 8.14, Waiver of COVID Era Student Fines and Fees.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote on 8.14, Waiver of COVID Era Student Fines and Fees. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. We're on to 8.15.
I move second reading and approval of Policy 2020 Course Design, Selection, and Adoption of Instructional Materials.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Discussion.
And again, this has been through thorough discussion, so this is simply going forward in the process.
My only question is, I mean, I would ask that our first policy we look at, when we next meet, is 2021? And get that taken care of as well? And I do appreciate...
Right, but we're on... We can't go up. This is just 2020.
I know that. I'm just saying, I'm just proposing the next time we meet to discuss policies, I'd like to get... I'm hoping that 2021 will be addressed at that point. And I just wanted to comment that I want to thank Ms. West, and I think it was Ms. Corvilly, that were here at our work session to talk about this. I appreciate it.
Further discussion on 2020? Seeing none, a call for the vote. All those in favor of the second reading and approval of Policy 2020 Course Design, Selection, and Adoption of Instructional Materials, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. The motion carries. We're on to 8.16, 2022, 2023.
There was an online comment submitted for 8.16.
Okay, all right, let's hear it. Sorry. I'm very sorry.
A comment by Donald Cook. "For your information, the calendar that is being voted on still has problems that the KSD has not corrected or addressed. Based on where the missing Wednesday early dismissal day is located, the KSD has put one of the make-up snow days on the first day of the elementary parent-teacher conferences. Elementary teachers cannot be expected to hold conferences if that is a day off. Please advise the KSD that they need to release a calendar that doesn't have mistakes, as the last three that they have put out have had problems that still aren't resolved. Better yet, ask the KSD to bargain a decent calendar with the KEA so that it is correct the first time, and we don't have to wait until June to have a still incorrect calendar." Thank you.
All right, I guess we can go to 8.16, 2022, 2023 Student Calendar. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve 2022, 23 Student Calendar.
I second.
Discussion.
Yeah, obviously, the question is to Superintendent Vela, accuracy of that claim.
So we're not answering the comment? I will... I do have someone here to speak to this, to talk about the calendar. It has been looked at by all labor groups in terms of voting. I have Ms. Jamie Fraser here to speak to the calendar.
Good evening, President Hamada, members of the board, Superintendent Vela, Ms. Curry. I can't answer that question either. Our labor team is the one that works on the calendar, so I don't have it in front of me to be able to say yes or no. I can tell you that KEA votes on their calendar, the KEA calendar, two versions, and all of the other labor groups do vote on the student calendar, which they mirror each other. The only difference is the Wednesdays are in color for the different teacher-directed versus administrator-directed days.
Thank you. Can I ask a...
Go ahead, Director Benno.
I'm just curious. I know most districts around us do calendars ahead of time. I know Renton, we do three years ahead. So I'm curious what the process is for... And I don't know the contracts, so I don't know. So what the process is for getting the calendars? Because I feel like this is kind of late. I don't know. I don't remember it being this late last year. So I'm kind of curious, like, what is the process for doing the calendars ahead of schedule? So that we have two or three years out?
As to Director Clark's comment, the calendars are correct. They were voted on by labor, all the labor groups. And as far as I know, KEA had voted on it. And there was a delay, Director Benno, you're correct. I think it was the result of some new players in those roles and inadvertent swapping by both the KEA and us of the wrong contract. And so we started talking past each other. And the last delay was caused by some attempted negotiations on professional development days. So all of that resulted in a bit of a delay. But what you have before you is the contracts that were voted on by the KEA.
Can I ask an additional question? The optional snow closure days, are those days not in school? They're green here, it says optional snow closure day. Are those days that teachers and students have off? Like I see February 6th, March 24th, April 24th, May 8th?
You know, I'm not certain about that. I would have to check.
Those are non-work days.
Yeah, so the way optional days work is that they're... If we need them, we could use them for school days. But they're optional for us in the calendar.
Right.
Thank you.
So I guess my question, because I've had a lot of comments about the school year being super long, and if this is the voted calendar, I'm just curious why we would put four non-work days instead of ending the school year four days earlier and putting those optional snow days at the end versus extending the calendar? That's just my thought.
Well, as you can see, the votes were very close for this, and calendars are exchanged prior to moving forward for any labor group to address these. So those questions are what they've developed as labor groups to share with each other. So those are vetted before that question. And so, again, the accuracy of this is correct in that all of the groups voted on these.
So this is like a... Well, not necessarily... I guess I don't necessarily care about, like, voting, per se. I'm just curious. So is this like a past practice? Have we always had four optional snow days embedded in the calendar like this?
I believe we've had up to three, if not four, in the past. Two or three, yeah. Up to two or three. And as you know, our inclement weather has been getting worse, and so we've been including at least one more, at least my time here. We hope not to use them.
So just for clarification, you're saying that it's already been vetted with all the people, the players in this, what we're seeing? And that is what they accepted and what we're voting on?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to totally understand that.
And I have the calendar B up, which is the calendar they recommend. And the optional snow closure day is the February 6th, and then February 13th through 17th on this calendar is when elementary conferences are. And then in October, there's no optional snow day. So I don't even understand the statement.
Your question?
So I'm just saying, I just don't even understand the statement, because I don't see a single week, based on what I'm seeing on board docs, I don't see a week where what... Where there is a optional snow closure day on a week of student elementary conferences. Am I reading that wrong?
I can't read it, so...
You're looking at option B?
I'm looking at option B.
Okay.
I know there were several versions of calendars that got sent around places, so I'm wondering if it's an older calendar, maybe? I don't know.
Director Bettinger, I'm trying to follow you here.
What is your question?
I don't have a question. I'm just making a comment, because it doesn't... What the speaker said, it doesn't seem to line up, because the comment says that there was an optional snow closure day on the first day of the elementary conferences, and I don't see that on either calendar A or B.
Director Bettinger, let me see if Dr. Behringer might be able to help us with this question. Thank you.
President Hamada, members of the board, Superintendent Vela, Ms. Curry. I know that prior to the A and B going out and being voted on, one of the discrepancies was that an optional snow day fell during conference week. And that was a previous iteration to what you're seeing there as option B. So if that was out there, and the person who's making the comment has not seen the current option B, that would make sense. But I can tell you how many times these two calendars have been scrutinized by our labor groups and the KSD to make sure, because it has been a long process. Usually, to Director Benno's point, usually, we go through this process to Director Benno's point, um, usually we go through this process in January and February at the very latest, and we're done, um, by that point, and so this is, uh, outside of our, our current practice. I guess this is also a reminder to us why we never respond to comments during board meetings, is that we need time to research and figure out what they're asking, so that we can get back to them with the appropriate answers. That, that was just a reminder for me that I'm frivolizing.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that, Vice President Benno. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Behringer, and thank you.
All right, any further discussion?
And in your knowledge, it's good knowledge.
All right, I'm going to call for a vote on eight point sixteen, 2022, 2023 student calendar. All those in favor of accepting this signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay, abstentions, the motion carries. We're on to nine point oh informational, and is there anything that anybody wants out of that?
I just, I mean, I've seen, I've heard that they're redrawing our board director boundary lines, but I haven't seen what it's going to look like. When is that, when are we going to see what it's going to look like?
We will have to get back to you on that, I don't think it's been done, but we can get back to you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just one second, Dr. Harmon, hopefully you, you heard my comment there, but do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Interim Superintendent Bella. Good evening, President Hamada, members of the board, Interim Superintendent Bella, Ms. Curry. Um, this is to inform you that we were going to engage with the, spending the $2,000 to have a company, um, invest in drawing those lines, we could carry that and present that to the board and to the public. It'll be an option and an opportunity for the public to actually make comment on that, the board to have ample time to review. This is just to get the first announcement out there that this is coming, um, and that the biggest thing is that, um, it will not impact school attendance boundaries. This is about voting boundaries regarding the census. And so just starting to inform the public about this, um, there'll be more information coming at the board meeting in June, I mean, the next board meeting in June as well. So you will continue to hear about this, but we're just trying to get it out there in the public and start that process.
Right, thank you.
And again, when I look at this, it could be confusing, let's make sure it's a census boundary, so everybody understands that.
Yes, so every 10 years, every school district across the nation has to balance their voting districts, um, based on any changes to the population, based on the census.
Is there a possibility that, um, if they redraw the board director boundaries, that we may not be in the boundary that we're currently in, and then what would happen with that?
So it is a rational possibility, but it is not something that happened during this, um, census re, this census count. So it did not happen for cancer, because none of our directors have to change any boundaries or representations, but we did look into that. If that were to have happened, what would happen is the board directors would finish their term, and then in the next election cycle, they would then have to re-vote and redraw, but that did not impact any board directors of this period at all, so we are safe in that. No board directors have to do anything, even if their next reelection opportunity, they don't have to change any districts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harmon.
Any other discussion on any of the informational? Thank you, Dr. Harmon, appreciate that. All right, we're on to 10.0 consent agenda at 11:11.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda, 10.01 through 10.04.
I second.
Discussion, seeing none. Uh, call for a vote on the consent agenda accepting 10.01 to 10.04. All those in favor of combining all those signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay, abstentions, the motion carries. We're on to three, 11.0 communication. I think we have none. And, and I guess, um, we're now on to the, uh, board reports. I'll start with Dr. Clark.
Pass.
Director Bettinger?
In the interest of time, I'll save my comments for when we have a vote.
Uh, Vice President Benno?
Um, I sup, I'll wait till next time, it's late, and I have stuff to say, but I'll wait till next time.
Right, and we're on to me, and I, I have nothing to say at this point, I'm just tired. So it is 11:13, and we are adjourned for the evening.